Good evening and welcome to this evening's study session. Is that me? Is that better? Testing. One, two, three, a little bit of an echo. Should I proceed? Oh, it's gonna be annoying. Okay. Okay, I will. Good evening and welcome to this evening's study session of the City Council. Agendas for study sessions, including concept reviews. Oh, that's not gonna work. Hello, better? Nope, it's not me. Okay, now I'll watch it. Can you hear us, Lori? Councilmember Anderson.
It's a terrible echo on your end.
We noticed. Broomfield's website is broomfield.org. This is new equipment. I was fine with the old equipment, the standard DEF. Much better. PI DEF is overrated. Our agenda this evening includes three... Wow, Jake! Thank you, Abby! That's never happened before, though. The mic's on before? Should I go ahead and restart? Are we recording, though? I don't know. Well, it says we're recording. Of course. Okay, well, let's start over. Good evening and welcome to this evening's study session of the City Council. Agendas for study sessions, including concept reviews, can be found by visiting Broomfield's website at broomfield.org. Our agenda this evening includes three study session items. Seeing there are no action items or concept reviews on the agenda this evening, there will not be any public comment. The study session will be televised on Channel 8 and through live streaming on Broomfield's website. Our first agenda item this evening is a review of Broomfield's 2021 Comprehensive Financial Report by Ruben Brown. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, which I'll ask our staff to summarize.
All right, let's see if it echoes now. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your patience. So our first item tonight, we have our CFO, Brenda Ritchie, our Chief Financial Officer. I hate when people use acronyms. Chief Financial Officer. And then we also have our auditors from Ruben Brown joining us tonight. So I'm gonna kick it off with Ms. Ritchie, if we have a mic up there. So hang tight one second.
There you go. Now you can hear me. Perfect. Okay, good evening. Thank you, Ms. Yelman, and good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protan... Well, nope, no, Mayor Protan, rest of council. Every year, so Broomfield prepares financial statements in accordance with governmental accounting standards and is required to have an independent auditor review those financial records and transactions for appropriateness, accuracy, with specific accounting standards. As with previous years, council has selected the auditor for the 2021 financial as Ruben Brown to perform those audits. And here with us this evening is Matt Marino, Mr. Matt Marino and Ms. Stephanie Simon with the firm to provide an overview of their analysis, results, and recommendations. You'll note from the packet that there is a finding that, as it relates to how Broomfield had calculated its scheduled expenditures of federal awards. And so that's a result of the methodology changing and also the increased funding award that we recently received with the coronavirus funding relief program. So that moved us into a different category. Steph has already begun the work to really mitigate and put us into a place that we can find implementing training standards, coordination, how we can improve, and then changing that methodology so that we are reporting on the expenditures. And so working within conjunction with those departments that were identified. So with that, I will turn it over this evening to Mr. Marino's to... For council to have the opportunity to ask those questions directly related to the audit.
Thank you. So as Brenda mentioned, we get to do a few audits for the sitting county of Broomfield. We do a financial statement audit. So your team puts together your financial statements. So I do want, before I forget, want to tell them thank you for their hard work on putting together the financial statement document. As you probably saw in the packet, it's not small, and there's lots of detail in there that they have to work through. So that's important. As part of the audit process, because Broomfield receives and expends more than $750,000 of federal money, they also get... We also get to perform a special audit called a single audit or a federal funds audit. And we'll talk about the results of both of those, but I wanted to kind of walk you through that in case you're not familiar with audit, audits, financial statement audits. I'll try not to use acronyms. Auditors are very known for using acronyms, so we'll try to not use those because those can be confusing and very detailed. So I'm gonna walk you through parts of it. Stephanie's gonna do our required communications as auditors. Stephanie was our engagement manager. If there's questions, please stop us throughout. You're not gonna ruin our flow. There's not much flow to an audit presentation anyway, so just go ahead and stop us, and we'll jump in on the question from there. So go ahead, Steph.
Okay, thank you. So you'll want to first take a look at the auditor communications letter. I'm not sure which one you guys have in front of you. But it's just sitting county of Broomfield Auditor Communications. And so here on the first page of this letter, I'm just gonna briefly walk you through the different things that we are required to communicate to you. So qualitative aspects of accounting practices. So that's here on this first page. Broomfield's accounting policies are disclosed in footnote 1. And in the current year, there were no new accounting policies implemented and no significant unusual transactions that we noted. And then we'll take a look here on this next page. This is page 2. So there are some accounting estimates that are more sensitive or slightly more significant than others. And in our opinion, those are the infrastructure conditions, the capital asset, useful lives, and depreciation, allowance for uncollectible receivable balances, and then certain pension-related liabilities and deferrals. And then further down on that page, similar to the accounting estimates, there are some disclosures that are more sensitive than others. In our opinion, those are the valuation methods and amounts of certain investments, some pension-related disclosures in footnote 8, and as well as lease and construction contract commitments, footnote 14. And various developer agreements, those are listed in footnote 16. And then finally, the disclosure of expenditures in excess of budgeted amounts. Those are in footnote 17. And then moving on to page 3. No issue circumstances that caused us to modify our auditor's report. We didn't have to consult with anyone outside of our audit engagement team. We did experience some delays this year with receiving certain information that will lead into what Matt will be covering later. But that relates to the single audit report, finding on internal control over compliance related to some corrections that were needed on the SEFA, as Brenda mentioned. But I do want to say that, other than that, we didn't experience any difficulties with management. We do want to thank them for how hard everyone worked to get us what we needed. The team, I'm sure, put in some nights and weekends to help us with that, and we want to make sure that we acknowledge that that is all happening on top of their day job, that they still need to get done. So we do appreciate that. Let's see, further down on page 3, there were some corrected and uncorrected misstatements this year. Those are attached at the end of this letter. The uncorrected misstatements, we didn't find to be material either individually or in the aggregate. And then last page, no disagreements with management that we would need to report. We are not aware of management having consulted with any other accountants outside of this organization regarding any audit matters. Management representation letter is also attached to this, similar to as has been done in prior years. And then lastly, there's not any matters that we're aware of that would affect our retention as auditors or any communications that aren't consistent with what you would expect with your auditors. And that is all I have to report for communications. Does anyone have questions? Okay, I'm gonna turn it back over to Matt.
My apologies. Our remote council member didn't have audio. She was asking if...
Oh, no.
We fixed it, and I'm like, well, in the chambers, so we're just trying to get her...
Okay.
...audio, so my apologies on that. But thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Should we wait till the end, or do you all want to do questions at each segment? End? Okay, we say end. So keep going, please.
Perfect, okay. So the next document we're gonna go through is your annual comprehensive financial report. So every year, Broomfield does submit this to various parties. One of those parties being the Government Finance Offices Association to earn the Certificate of Excellence in Reporting. So that's attached in here. We did earn that for the 2020 year, and we are submitting it for the 2021 year. You also submit it to bondholders, state auditor, any other interested parties. So I'm gonna walk you through that document. That was the 200-page-plus document that was included in the agenda packet. I'm gonna walk you through the document, just because some people may not be familiar with kind of the contents of it. And I'm not gonna go through detailed numbers, because we could be here for six hours, and I don't know that anybody wants that much detail on it right now. So if we go to the financial statements and we flip through that, you're gonna see a couple different things. You're gonna see the transmittal letter at the beginning. That's prepared by management. And then, starting on page, let's see, document page 11, that's our auditor's opinion, our report. You'll notice, if you've seen these in the past, it looks a little different. Our standards, as auditors change this year, we had to implement some new auditing standards. And with that change in auditing standards came a change in how the auditor's report looks. So the opinion is the first paragraph on page 11 there, and it's a clean or unmodified opinion. If you're familiar with what it used to look like in the past, it was kind of buried in the middle, and you're like, what did we really get as a result of this? So it's kind of nice. It's front and center. It's where you can see, you know, what the result was. So unmodified or clean opinion, the highest level we can give Broomfield. So I do want to stress that. Behind the auditor's report is your management's discussion and analysis. It's just like it sounds. It's management's discussion and analysis of the results for the year. It's a good way to start with. Behind that is your actual financial statements. We have a couple different sets of financial statements. We have our basic financial statements, or what's often called our government-wide financial statements. So you have your governmental activities and your business-type activities. And this is on a full accrual, or what you would say, similar to what other entities report on a full gap basis. All liabilities are recorded, all assets are recorded. If we go down to the fund level, which I'll talk about in a second, capital assets, like your equipment and stuff, does not show up in your fund level, nor does your pension liability. So if you look on the statement of net position, Broomfield had total assets of about 1.649 million... Or billion, sorry about that. I kind of rounded off too much. And then we have our net position. So you have your assets less your liabilities is your net position. So your net position's basically what's left over for either restricted purposes and so on. So our ending net position for the 2021 on the government-wide level was 1.1 billion. If you go behind that is your statement of activities. I always call that the upside-down income statement for governments. It's kind of... If you think about income statement, if you think about your accounting classes, if you took it in college, governments are in the business of providing services and not necessarily generating revenue. So the focus of this financial statement is, how are we spending the money first, and then how do we pay for it after the fact? So that's why your expenditures are at the top and your revenues at the bottom. So overall, we had a change in net position of a decrease of $103 million. That's... We'll talk about how that correlates to the fund financial statements in a second. But really, just want to kind of walk you through it, because not everybody's familiar with how these financial statements work and really how to read them. Behind those, you'll see the governmental fund financial statements. So you have several different funds are presented as major. So you have your general, your sales and use, your urban renewal authority, and the human services funds. Those are behind there, as well as the income statement for those same funds. I'm not gonna walk you through all of the activity, because there's nothing crazy exciting in there. Behind that, you have budget-to-actual reports. Why is that important? It's always good to see what was the plan for the year and how did we execute the plan. So that's on page 36, 37, 38. And then, starting on page 39, is our proprietary activities. And I noticed behind the agenda, or after us on the agenda, is a discussion about rate studies. So this is where your water and sewer activity is reported in the financial statements within your proprietary funds. And that will kind of lead well into that, as far as what do we have for assets, what did we have for liabilities, how much revenue did we collect, how much expenditures do we have. Nothing crazy big there to report. Probably the biggest thing is that we did issue debt as an entity during 2021. That was for the water project, and that's reported in here. And there's a disclosure that discusses how that matter took place, but probably no surprise to you, because I'm sure you all had plenty of discussion about that matter. Behind the proprietary statements is your fiduciary funds. So fiduciary funds are just like they sound. You're acting in a fiduciary nature. It's not necessarily money that Broomfield could use. It's money you're holding for others. And so you have your pension and other trust funds, as well as your other custodial funds there. And then behind that is a whole bunch of information called your footnotes. Stephanie talked a little bit about the footnotes. The footnotes are there to provide you some additional context on how are we valuing assets, how are we valuing liabilities, how did we derive the pension liability, what kind of actuarial assumptions were made. And when Stephanie talked about estimates, the reason the pension is such a big estimate is we're relying on an actuary to project out what the future benefits that will need to be paid to the pension participants. We're also projecting out what the investment returns would be, and then that gets basically discounted to the current period. So I'm not gonna go through every footnote, because there is a ton of information in there. So that's kind of a big deal there. And then if we go to the page... Let's see, where do I want to jump next, because there's just a few things. Behind the footnotes is your required supplementary information. I always like to look at this, especially when you have pension plans, because there's some good multi-year snapshots on what's happening with the pension plans. You can look and say, okay, what percentage funded are we? That's important to pay attention to. One thing I do want to point out, Broomfield has funded what is to be required. Just because you have a liability does not mean that Broomfield did not send in what was needed to fund the pension plan. Some of it has to do with actuarial changes, investment returns, and so on. But that's always a question, why do we have a liability? When the plan asks you to submit the money, you have submitted what you were supposed to submit. And I do want to point that out, because that's a common misconception. Let's see. And then behind that, starting on page 104, is a lot of information as far as budget taxals and kind of on all the non-major funds. So that's a lot, a lot of detail. And then behind that is your statistical informations as far as 10-year trend data for fund balance, net position, population growth, major employer, so on. So that's all important information to point out and important things that, if you wanted to know what's really happening at Broomfield and what's kind of the trends are, that's a good place to look at it, at least start. And then way at the end of the Act for Document, or your annual comprehensive financial report, is our single audit reports. So we issue two different reports. We issue a report over internal control over financial reporting, and then we issue a report over compliance with the Uniform Guidance. I'm happy to report, we did issue an unmodified opinion on both those, so there's no modifications, highest level, clean opinion. The one thing I do want to point out behind there, and Brenda did allude to it, is we did have a recommendation this year, and it was a... In the past, we've talked about recommendations. There's kind of a couple different levels of recommendations. There's deficiency, there's significant deficiency, and there's material weakness. What are the differences between those? Deficiency is just something we need to let you know about. Significant deficiency is just like it sounds. It's bigger than a deficiency, but not quite material. Material weakness is, could a material misstatement go undetected in the financial statements if this was not corrected? So we did issue a material weakness with regard to the controls over the SEFA or your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Let me talk a little bit about your SEFA and why that finding was drawn. Historically, Broomfield has gotten a lot of its federal funding from human services programs. And that process is very different than some of the other grant programs that we've had the last couple of years, especially with the coronavirus relief programs. We've gotten a lot of money in, and it just works a little different. The process is very different as far as how that reconciliation process happens between Broomfield and the other entities. With human services, there was a very regimented process. Every month, there's a reconciliation that happens. The state helps you reconcile it all out. With this other stuff, there's a little more leeway and a little more discretion as far as you have to do some reconciliations on your own part, on your own end. Also, there has been some staffing changes in Broomfield. I do want to point out, virtually every entity I've worked with is short accountants. They've had significant turnover in their accounting and finance departments. So it's kind of a bad time to have a lot of financial needs and a shortage of accountants. And I would say Broomfield has not been able to escape that trend either. We, as a firm, even, have to work through that often. So really, the recommendation relates to the controls that were provided over that preparation of that document. So there's the preparer of your SEFA, and then there's a person that would review it and make sure it's accurate. We're recommending that the controls be enhanced and improved, and additional training be provided to both their preparer and the reviewer in order to make sure that those errors would not occur in the future. Any questions on the finding, as far as that goes?
Any questions on the finding? I see none.
Okay. And then behind the Act for Document is our management letter. So we did issue one other recommendation, not to the level of material weakness or significant deficiency. And it's just really got to do with financial close process and cross-training. As I alluded to, every entity is having turnover in staff. And so, to the extent possible, we're recommending that your finance team be cross-trained on different functions so that if an individual that was the key preparer of that function might leave the organization, there's somebody to take on that role and not have a large learning curve or a large gap in knowledge. And management's all over it, and we're even gonna come back in in a couple of weeks and help provide some additional training to help further the knowledge gain in the finance department. We love to share our knowledge. It's what I do all the time. We work with governments all the time. And I'd love to tell you all, you're unique, but you're really not unique in this sense, because it's just really, virtually every client I have had this year has had at least one person in their finance department leave. So that's a lot, a lot of change. So kudos to your team to keeping the doors on. I know we're a little later in the year than we're accustomed to, but we're still very early in the year as far as getting it done, because it's really not due to the state until September 30 with extensions. So that's a good thing on our part. Any questions on the audit results, or any recommendations, or any additional clarifications or context? We appreciate being of service to Broomfield, and we really enjoy working with your entire team. They're very, very good to work with.
Well, in my experience, it's always been a pleasure. So thank you so much as well. We'll go to councilmember questions and comments next. Any member of council have any questions?
I know.
Councilmember Lim.
I had some general questions that may actually be our staff that could answer these questions, too. On page 30, when we have the 2021 revenues by source for governmental activities, this pertains to a topic that we're going to be discussing further this evening. The charges for services represents 12% of our revenues, according to that pie chart. Is that typical for a municipality or county?
I would say it's hard to compare. 12% as a whole. Some municipalities may not have water or sewers part of their overall activities. That might be part of another metro district that's not reported. So I would tell you, you really need to look at that on how that fund is operating, and is it self-sustaining on itself? How much support is it able to support itself on user fees? Or is it requiring a lot of outside support from other Broomfield activities, if that makes sense?
Okay, yeah, I understand. You have to have apples to apples for the comparison. Okay. The... There's a statement on page 31 about investments that I wasn't sure if it was worded correctly, or if I was interpreting that correctly. So investments decreased to negative $505,967 for 2021 compared to $5 million in 2020.
It's looking like there might be a couple zeros missing from that, based on what I'm seeing. There might be a slight typo.
Okay.
But we will look at that in detail and make sure.
Okay. And just, I'm glad that you expressed confidence that the staff has responded to the training opportunities that you're willing to provide. Does our staff... I feel like I should ask this question. I feel confident, but I feel I should address this question just because of the problem that arose last year.
we're a little later in the year than we're accustomed to, but we're still very early in the year as far as getting it done, because it's really not due to the state until September 30 with extensions. So that's a good thing on our part. Any questions on the audit results or any recommendations or any additional clarifications or context? We appreciate being of service to Broomfield, and we really enjoy working with your entire team. They're very, very good to work with.
Well, in my experience, it's always been a pleasure. So thank you so much as well. We'll go to council member questions and comments next. Any member of council have any questions?
I know.
Councilmember Lim.
I had some general questions that may actually be our staff that could answer these questions, too. On page 30, when we have the 2021 revenues by source for governmental activities, this pertains to a topic that we're going to be discussing further this evening. The charges for services represents 12% of our revenues, according to that pie chart. Is that typical for a municipality or county?
I would say it's hard to compare 12% as a whole. Some municipalities may not have water or sewers part of their overall activities. That might be part of another metro district that's not reported. So I would tell you, you really need to look at that on how that fund is operating, and is it self-sustaining on itself? How much support is it able to support itself on user fees, or is it requiring a lot of outside support from other Broomfield activities, if that makes sense?
Okay, yeah, I understand. You have to have apples to apples for the comparison. Okay. The... There's a statement on page 31 about investments that I wasn't sure if it was worded correctly, or what the... If I was interpreting that correctly. So investments decreased to negative $505,967 for 2021 compared to $5 million in 2020.
I'm looking... It's looking like there might be a couple zeros missing from that, based on what I'm seeing. There might be a slight typo.
Okay.
But we will look at that in detail and make sure.
Okay. And just, I'm glad that you expressed confidence that the staff has responded to the training opportunities that you're willing to provide. Does our staff... I feel like I should ask this question. I feel confident, but I feel I should address this question just because of the problem that arose last year. Does our staff feel confident that they have the resources they need going forward to correct the deficiencies?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Lim. We do. It's just as Ms. Marina said, we're all facing a tight market of trying to recruit and retain folks. So right now, it's very difficult within finance. But we anticipate, we have ramped up our staffing, have added a few more positions. But the main thing is, he pointed out, was that we need to be cross-training and enhancing that. We do it to a certain level, but there's always opportunities for improvement, and so we'll continue to improve our processes as we move forward. So at this time, we believe we have enough resources provided to us.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other council member questions or comments? Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. So this, we got an email about our audit and that saying that this is just wasteful spending, and this is something we shouldn't be taking time to do. I just wanted to clarify, this is something that's not only required by our city and county charter, but it's required by the state.
Required by the state, required by your bondholders, required by federal government. Several parties are very interested in this process.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. You know, I want to thank staff for your efforts in doing this. It seems like that you have all had a whole lot on your plate, and this definitely was no short task. So thank you for the amount of work that you did on this. You know, to that point, I wanted to clarify that our staffing in the finance grants departments, are we fully staffed at this point? What's the plan to become fully staffed? And then kind of the tag on that is, have we identified the future trainings in order to get that staff fully trained and ready to go for the next year, as our auditors have pointed out?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. In terms of staffing, we are not fully staffed at this time. However, we've, in relation to just wrapping out the audit and jumping full force into budget season, we decided to put our best efforts with the current staff we have and then revamp that, not revamp, but pick that back up after the budget process has kind of settled down, because they go hand in hand, right? Finance as a whole, as we move forward, needs to be in coordination, not just independently in their divisions, but as a whole and as we move forward. So our plan is to ramp that back up in terms of recruitment after probably within the next month, so we can focus our efforts. But however, in the meantime, we do have identified our Assistant Finance Director, Amanda Silk, will be spearheading this specific training and working with our accounting staff. She has a great background and skill set to be able to provide that for our accounting team as well. So we've got that in place, as Ruben Round mentioned. They'll be coming in to do some. So we'll be looking at that, as well as sending staff next week to GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, training specifically on that item. We will be sending staff next week to be able to get additional training from that perspective. And then the intent is to bring that back and train the trainer concept where they have the opportunity to come back and share that with the group.
Okay, perfect. That sounds like a great plan moving forward, and I look forward to updates on that. So revenue calculations, we've talked a lot about how we are calculating that revenue differently than it has been done previously. And I'm sure, I don't think I explained it as well as you can. But is this, is that revenue calculation being done in this, according to this audit, or is this something that's going to change in moving forward?
So the, this report is based on the actuals. The revenue projections and calculations that you're referring to would be part of our budget process. And so what we'd be doing is looking, so it's continuing, it's just enhancing the process that we previously had and improving upon that. So in terms of getting real-time data based on the economic trends, working very closely with our partners in economic vitality, to be able to say what's happening at a local, regional, and national approach, and what's applicable to here in Broomfield based on the sales, tax, use trends, things of that nature, and how do we apply that. So that comes more in our budget, which is the planning process, as opposed to the revenue calculations here, which is our actuals.
Okay, so our actuals, we'll be able to compare actuals to actuals year over year.
Correct.
And our audits, we'll be able to do the same. We'll be able to compare and compare, and we won't be having to slightly adjust our thinking in any of that.
That's correct.
Perfect. And then my last question was with regard to the tax abatements or the development agreements that we have. So this has been one of those conversations that we've gotten a lot more information on, and what those actually look like, how many of those development agreements we have, and kind of just the timing of what those are going to look like. So I was curious, from our auditor's standpoint, as we're looking at the timing for those, that's going to determine kind of where we sit financially in the future. Is there any concern from your point of view as an auditor in looking at what kind of place we will be in, whether that's negative, positive, or neutral regarding any of those development agreements and the timing that those could trigger?
So that's not necessarily within the scope of the audit. Really, what we're looking at with the audit is that we disclose the financial impacts or the potential financial impacts in the footnotes, and that's why you see that large footnote at the back of the financial statement. This talks about all the different agreements we have, what sort of concessions or things that Broomfield might have given the developer or the party in exchange for another thing back. So it's really, that would have to be looked at hand in hand with revenue projections and a lot of other things in order to opine on that, if that makes sense.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I just wanted to find out kind of what level that analysis was going to take. So thank you so much, and thank you for the audit.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Leslie?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank team, both the internal team and the auditing team. This is a lot of work, a lot of detail, a lot of intentionality. I want to particularly make note of the hope and expectation that Broomfield will again receive the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. For those who aren't aware, and perhaps some of our residents aren't aware, that that is probably one of the most important validations of our transparency, of a public organization's transparency and adherence to a set of principles that define what a good audit and a good financial program should look like. And Broomfield has received that award over many, many years. It's got a very consistent track record. And during my campaign, I found out most people weren't even aware that we had that. In fact, I found out of that because the certificate was in the former downstairs display case, which is no longer there. But this is a very important validation of the work that the team does, the leadership of the city manager, and of city council. And I just think it's important for us to do a better job of letting our communities know that, in fact, Broomfield has consistently received this award. And from time to time, there are going to be some areas that are going to need some refinement, new things that come up to us. You've mentioned one already, and that's not a major issue, of course, as you said. And that's just a process of continuous improvement for us. And the team has just done an exceptional job. We're not talking about billions upon billions of billions of dollars. We're talking about millions of dollars, but every penny counts. And so for me tonight, I just hope the media will affirm this. As it speaks to this audit, the team has done a great job. The leadership is doing a great job. The county is doing a wonderful job of utilizing every penny that we receive in the most efficient manners possible. And that's validated in the report that you've just given to us. So I just want to congratulate the team, thank the auditors for their work, and waiting to hear from the Government Financial Officers Association, because that is, I think, a major way of validating that we're holding ourselves accountable to the taxpayers. So thank you for all that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Ritchie, you wanted to clarify something?
Yeah, if I may respond to Councilmember Lim, we were able to, I think it's the wording, we looked back at that investment. It's the way it's worded. However, the numbers are correct. So it's actually a loss. So the income increase, it was $5 million, but there was a loss of $500,000. So we can certainly reword that, so it's clear, stated clearly. Sorry, I feel like I'm yelling in the microphone. But happy to do that and clarify. But, so the numbers are accurately stated. Thank you.
I know, it still sounds a little echoey to me, too. So I'm turning off my mic so we don't have competing mics. Is there anyone else with questions or comments on council? I don't see any hands online. Oh, Councilmember Marshall.
I just have one question on the, not really on the, necessarily the audit, but on the development agreement listing in the back. Is that all of them? Is that all the development agreements that... I know you've been going through the, staff's been going through the development agreements to figure out exactly what we have, and what we didn't know that we didn't have. This, a list, a good listing of...
Go ahead, Brenda.
If I may, thank you for the question. So it's really the material development agreements. It does not contain all of the development agreements listed in this audit finding. I mean audit, sorry, it's not finding, but report.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before we move on, well, that does it for us. Thank you for your concise presentation and for your continued excellent service. Thank you all. Our next study session item this evening is a review and recommendations regarding the utility rate study. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, and I'll ask our staff to begin the discussion.
All right. So it is still Chief Financial Officer Brenda Ritchie's show. We'd like to welcome her back up to the podium, as well as the consultants that she's been working with. And Brenda, I think you're going to introduce them. So I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Yelman, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. Brenda Ritchie, Chief Financial Officer, here tonight to talk about a conversation that's been long awaited regarding the outcome of our utility rate study conducted in partnership with Willdan Financial Services, who are here tonight. So we have Mr. Kevin Burnett, who's the project manager, and Mr. Michael Cronin, our senior analyst, who were instrumental in working with staff in trying to complete this, not as big as our last audit that you just went through, but in terms of pages, still over 150 pages. So, next slide, Jake, please. So in an effort to really consolidate that 150-page report, we're just gonna, I'll kick it off with a brief overview of what is a rate study, why do we do it, and then turn it over to our experts here at Willdan to really go through the specifics of each utility, and then wrap it up with some other considerations and next steps. Next slide, please. So over the last several years, it's really propelled us to really reconsider our methodology to calculate rates, fees, and charges as it relates to the three utilities. So that's going to be water, wastewater, which is sewer, and water reclamation, also known as reuse. So similar to probably your own personal experiences with seeing rises in gas or grocery prices, we're seeing a lot of demands on our system, a lot of cost increases related to the economic shifts in the supply and demand chains, as well as those unfunded mandates. So in order to provide these essential services, there are going to be requirements coming down from a federal regulatory standpoint that we need to comply with. And so all of these expenditures that come into play are going to impact and require us to really evaluate the revenues that come in regarding, and in conjunction with the expenses that are going out. And so, as you can see, our last study was done over a decade ago. And so really, again, with those changes and fluctuations, changes in how we're operating and looking at the systems and those demands, it was really necessary and critical for us to consult with and do a formal solicitation to really look at a firm that could come in, help understand Broomfield's structure, where we are currently and where we're headed. And that's really to generate enough revenue regarding the maintenance, the operating, and then the capital expenditures. And so really, those are the drivers that are developing, that are leading to the need for this rate study. So next slide, please. And so just as a quick reminder for the public, because the utility systems operate as an enterprise, and what that means, it's operating as a business. So not in the sense where we need to make a profit, as the auditors just kind of talked about. We're not in the business to make money, but however, we must make enough money to cover our expenditures. And so it has to be self-sustaining. And these three utilities cannot be supported by taxes. So our sales tax, property tax cannot be used in order to fund those increasing expenditures that we're seeing. So, and just as a reminder, so there's a, you've got operational costs which are funded by user charges, and then development really funds those license fees as for that growth and new development. Next slide, please. So what this study is really set out to accomplish is really a comprehensive understanding of the trends that we're seeing currently and where we project in terms of our capital. And, you know, as I just said, those demands are really increasing along with those shifting demands and increased costs. So there was also an effort to really review the current model, see what's working, what's not working. Are there any enhancements that we need to move forward? Because water is a utility that, I mean, all of our utilities are critical. But as we're seeing along the Front Range, along the Western Coast, that high demand is really going to really shift our efforts. So in terms of moving forward, we need to help understand, are there efforts for conservation? Are there efforts for, by moving to a tiered model, which Michael and Kevin will review. But really, the end goal is to make sure that we have enough revenue generation to cover those costs. And so with that, I will turn it over to Kevin Burnett, who's with Willdan, and he'll review the current structure so that gives you a good idea of where we currently are and how we've come to their recommendations.
Thanks, Brenda. Next slide, please. Yeah, so I'll walk through the current state, and then we'll get into some of our proposed changes. Mike will come up in a moment, and we'll try and get us through all this. So next slide, please. So this is your current rate structure. So this is both the water and the reuse. So water is primarily going to be, as we have in the example there, you're showering, you're washing the car, doing dishes, taking care of some of that kind of stuff. Your water is billed based on two pieces. You've got a monthly base charge that is assessed, and that's $10.47 per single family. Once you get beyond a 3/4-inch meter, which is typical for a single family, the larger the meter, the more monthly charge you incur. The theory behind that being the bigger meters allows more water use through that meter, so you should pay for the additional water use that you can get from those larger capacity meters. And this is paid every month, regardless of how much water you use. So if you're away vacationing in Florida or Arizona, you're a snowbird, if your tap is still on, you're going to pay that every month, regardless of whether or not you're using water. The uses charges down to the bottom, you have what we call a uniform rate structure. So it's $3.36 per 1,000 gallons. So if you use 1,000 gallons, you pay $3.36 for that first 1,000 gallons. If you're using 50,000 gallons, that 50th 1,000 gallon is also charged at $3.36 per 1,000 gallons. It's based on actual meter readings, and the city rounds it down to the nearest 1,000 gallons. On the water reclamation or reuse side, that's more of an irrigation. It's a much smaller customer base than you have on the water and sewer side. The revenue structure is tiered to the water utility, where right now, the rate structure is, it's 50% of what the potable water rate structure is. So next slide, please. And then on the wastewater side, so again, this is the discharge from the water that you're using in your house, at the businesses and whatnot. So there are some different approaches to how your wastewater, your sewers build. There's the average winter consumption, AWC. So that's looking at four monthly bills during the winter period. The assumption for using AWC is, if you look at just the winter months, primarily, all your water use is going to be for indoor or domestic water use. You're not irrigating outside. So that's all the water that is going to get returned to the sewer system. So that's the purpose of the AWC. So it's billed at $3.46. Or you could be billed based on an equivalent residential unit. So that's the assumed demand of a single-family home. That's billed at $13.84 per month. The minimum charge between the two is $13.84. So that's the minimum bill that you're going to get. But then you're charged the greater of either your AWC or your ERU, depending upon how your usage falls. And then we've got a note at the bottom there for all new accounts, until you've got that AWC established. Maybe you moved to Broomfield in June or July, you don't have an AWC set yet at that point. So you're charged $20.76 per connection until you go through that winter billing period and you have an AWC established. Next slide, please. So this is a graph that probably means more to Michael and myself than it does to all of you, but it's going to be important later on. So we're going to spend a minute here looking at this graph. So what we've tried to show here is how your water system is used over the course of a year. So we've got, the blue bar is how the single-family consumption takes place. You can see in the winter months, you've got relatively low consumption. Once you get into the summer months, you see that spike. There's a big water use spike in the middle there, and then it comes back down the tail end of the year. You've got a similar type line for the commercial customers. They peak in the summer, a little bit less in the winter months and the fall months. And then the multifamily has got the lowest. So they're using about the same amount of water throughout the year. There's a little bit of peaking. There's a little bit of peaking in the summer months there. And then, the other important thing to look at here is that average line, that nice yellow line that's just above 8%. If we were trying to design a water system, the easiest way for us to design the system was if everybody used the same amount of water every single day, day in, every day, every month, every year. We could build a system so that it just had to accommodate that nice yellow line, and we could have maybe a 3-inch water line going throughout the city, and that would be enough to cover it. That's not the world we live in. We do have these peaks. So, we need to build maybe an 8-inch line or a 12-inch line so that we can accommodate those peaks in the summer. With that being said, we're not using that full capacity over the full year. We've got some points where we're down in the early months where we've only got 4% of our consumption, so that extra capacity is sitting idle. We had to build it to accommodate the summer, but we're not using it year-round. And it's an expensive way to build a system. It's an expensive way to run a system. So, that factors into the rate design that we're going to get into in a little bit. But, we wanted to have this in mind as we get to that point. So, next slide, please. So, what we're looking at here is a utility rate structure comparison. So, this is based on your existing rate structure. So, your existing water and your existing sewer rates. So, you can see Erie closest to me, and then we've got Broomfield down at the other end at about $97.63 for a single-family combined water and sewer bill on a monthly basis. So, and then, you've got the average there at 121.65. So, you're below the average compared to the neighbors here. Next slide, please. So, now, we're going to move into some of our proposed changes. So, again, we want to make sure that we're expressing the methodology, the steps that we took through and working with staff to come up with our recommendations, understand how Broomfield compares as a result of these proposed changes, and then, what's it going to mean for the customers ultimately at the end of the day. So, next slide. So, this is the three phases of a rate structure. So, this is something that we go through with all of our clients. It's not specific to Broomfield. The data we use is specific to you, but the process itself is the same. So, the first phase is the how much revenue is needed. This is what we call our revenue sufficiency. So, this is where we take all the city's finances, the revenues, the expenses, the intended capital improvement program, and we look and we say, how much revenue are you generating? What are your costs? Are you generating enough revenue to cover your costs? What this will tell us is, yes, you're generating enough revenue to cover your costs, or no, you're not. So, that tells us how much more revenue we need. So, this will tell us that we need a 5% revenue increase in order to cover our costs. You're going to hear me say this a few times. A revenue increase is not necessarily the same thing as a rate increase, and I'll get into that in a minute. But the first part here, the phase one, the revenue sufficiency, that's telling us how much more revenue we need. The second piece is the cost of service. So, who is incurring the cost? So, this hearkens back to that graph we were looking at a little bit before, where we had the single-family did a big spike and the commercial customers did this big spike. So, we're having to build a system to accommodate the use of those two customer classes. So, as I said, that's an expensive way to build a system. That's an expensive way to run a system. It was those two customer classes of the three that are primarily causing us to have to build the system that way. They're the ones that are incurring those costs. So, as part of the cost of service process, we identify how much does it cost us to serve each individual customer class. Phase three, once we know how much revenue we need, we know who's costing us to serve, we can then determine what the rates need to be in order to generate those costs, as Brenda mentioned. We're not trying to generate revenue to build a big cash balance, but we need to make sure that we have enough money to cover our costs on an annual basis and that we're being financially responsible. So, next slide, please. So, moving into the cost of service. So, we use an industry standard approach. The industry standard for water and sewer rates is the American Waterworks Association. Michael and I are members of the Waterworks Association. They recognize different customer classes, pace different demands on the system. There's a methodology that AWA, I'll try and avoid the acronyms, uses in developing cost of service. They've got the M1 manual is the bible of ratemaking. I'm currently on the committee that's updating that M1 manual right now to make sure that we adhere to industry standards and that we're not putting Broomfield in a bad position by doing something that's not accepted in the industry. And then, as we look at the costs themselves, we allocate costs based on fixed and variable costs. So, you can imagine that there's going to be some costs, like chemicals, power, that kind of thing, is a variable cost. So, the more water you use, the more of those costs you incur. At the same time, you're going to have some more fixed costs, like the pipes in the ground. That's not going to vary by how much water you use. Those are fixed costs. The number of customers within each customer class. So, you have to mail out bills every month. You'll have customers calling in to ask questions, to relate to customer service. The more customers you have in a class, the higher costs you're going to incur. The total flows within each customer class, and then that peak demand, that nice graph that we were looking at before. So, all of those factors come together in determining how much it costs to serve each customer class. Next slide, please. So, again, this is the revenues versus rates. So, the revenue increase is how much more revenue do we need? So, as an example, on the water side, for 2023, we've identified the need for 5% more revenue in order to operate the system efficiently. So, that's how much money we need to generate in order to cover our costs. Once we get into the rate side of things, that's how we say, okay, how are we now going to recover that 5% of revenue? So, as we're allocating costs between the customer classes, we might need 5% more revenue overall, but the single-family might get a 2% increase, the commercial class might get a 6% increase, the multifamily class might get a 1% increase, so that overall, we're generating the 5% revenue we need, but it does not translate directly across. And even within the rate, the customer classes themselves, you might have a single-family customer that sees a decrease in their bill, and there might be another single-family customer that sees an increase in their bill. So, we want to make sure that we don't say everybody's going to get a 5% increase, because that's not the case. That's just how much additional revenue that we need to generate. Next slide, please. So, moving into water a little bit more specifically, we'll go to the next slide. So, this is the financial scenario that we put together based on your existing rates, your existing expenditures, the city's capital improvement program, what we see as being needed going forward. So, there's a few things that we want to note here. The first being the beginning fund balance. You can see, as of 2024, that fund balance goes negative if we stick with what the current rates are and we don't have any additional revenue increase. The second thing that we would want to point out here is, we've got two metrics that we're trying to look at as part of this financial plan. So, we've got the target reserves and the debt service coverage. So, the target reserves is more of a policy decision. So, that's making sure that we have enough money in the bank that, again, in a perfect world, we would send out bills, we'd get money back from the customers, and then, our bills would become due. So, we'd always have that money coming in from customers before we have to pay our bills. Again, that's not the world we live in. There's that disconnect between when we get revenues and when we have to pay our bills. So, the target reserves is ensuring that we have enough money in the bank that we can mitigate that discrepancy between when we get money coming in and when we have to pay our bills. It's a self-imposed target. It's financially prudent to have one, but again, it's a policy decision. The bottom line there, the debt service coverage. So, when you went out and issued debt for different projects on the water system, you made a pledge to the bondholders that you would have a certain amount of revenue every year to ensure that you could pay that debt service. So, the debt service coverage, what it's saying is that for every dollar of debt you have outstanding in a given year, you're pledging that you will have $1.120 of net revenue available to cover that debt. So, that's taking your operating revenues less your operating expenses. That has to be $1.20 for every dollar of debt you have outstanding. So, you can see on the debt service coverage side, you're healthy. So, we're good there. That's the legal requirement. So, of the two, that's the most important one from a legal standpoint that you have to admit. But at the same time, as we showed, the fund balance going negative is not something that's sustainable. Next slide, please. So, again, this is showing the same information but showing it graphically. So, you can see the revenues. The expenses are exceeding our revenues in every year, which means that our fund balance is going down, and that's just not sustainable. Next slide, please. So, the recommended course of action based on that is, we do have revenue increases that we're proposing over the next several years. So, we've got a 5% in 2023, a 3%, a 2%, a 2%, a 2%. This is based on all of these factors that you see here, the increasing O&amp;M costs. Brenda talked about that a little bit earlier, high inflation environment that we're in right now, everybody's household budget. The expenses are going up. It's the same for the city. It's the same for the water utility. The water utility's expenses are going up, just like everybody's household budgets are. We've got some capital needs that we need to take care of, water replacements and extensions of lines. It would be great if the pipes in the ground could last forever without ever having to be replaced. Again, that's not the perfect world that we live in, so we need to make sure that we are addressing those replacements so that we don't have line breaks, which are more expensive to replace than a proactive approach. And then, we've got the targeted reserve levels and the debt service coverage. So, next slide, please. So, this is what our proposed plan looks like with those rate increases that we had on the prior slide. So, you can see right off the bat, the beginning fund balance, it's in the black now. We don't have the negative fund balance. Our debt service coverage is still strong. The target reserves and the ending fund balance there, we're dipping below what our target reserve is, but based on the plan that we have, you're building up cash reserves over time so that you are approaching where you should be and making sure that you do have that adequate fund balance to take care of unexpected things, which we hope never happen. Next slide, please. So, this is the proposed customer impact. So, this would be for your average single-family customer with a 3/4-inch meter, so different levels of consumption. So, a couple of things to point out here as well. If we go all the way to the bottom of the chart on the left, you can see the current base fee, that's that $10.47 that gets paid every month regardless of how much water you use. The proposed is $14.31, so we've got a bump up there. As part of the process that we worked through with staff, we went, we gave them a fairly rigorous exercise of getting a good understanding of what Broomfield's objectives were. What were you trying to achieve from your rate structure? And the two highest-ranked objectives that we came back with from staff was, number one, revenue stability, and number two, conservation. So, you can imagine that those kind of are butting heads a little bit. If we went strictly with revenue stability, which is what Brenda would want, we would charge everybody the same amount every month. There would be no volume rate. It would all be in the fixed charge. She'd know exactly how much revenue she was going to get from all of her customers every month. It would make her life a whole lot easier, at least in this realm. The problem with that is, if you're not being charged anything for your volume rate, you have no incentive whatsoever to conserve water at all. You can just leave the tap running all day. It doesn't matter. You're paying the same bill regardless of whether you use 1,000 gallons that month or 50,000 gallons. So, the flip side of that was, we wanted to go with a tiered rate structure to help encourage conservation so that the more water you used, the more you paid for that additional incremental unit of water use. So, we wanted to do the balancing act of making sure that we had revenue stability, we had enough money coming in to pay all our bills, but we also wanted to cover conservation. So, what we've got here is, the first tier would go up to 5,000 gallons. So, the way we looked at the tiers was, we did a really deep dive into all your billing data. We worked very diligently with staff. We put them through a lot of hoops to try and get as good billing data so that we could really dig into everything here. And what we uncovered was, the average winter water use or discretionary or indoor water use for a single-family customer in Broomfield was about that 5,000 gallon a month level. So, that was our basis for the tier one rate. Was setting the tier one so that you had enough to do your laundry. You could take a showers. You could do your cooking, your cleaning. And we wanted to provide that water at the lowest tier at the cheapest rate there. The next tier goes up from the current $3.36 to $3.40 per 1,000 gallons, and the block goes from 5,000 gallons to 20,000 gallons. So, again, this was taking a look at the summertime use. What's the average summertime irrigation use for an average single-family home in Broomfield? So, that got us up to that about 20,000 gallon level. So, we decided to set that second tier at that level so that it accommodated the average irrigation in the city. And then, the third tier there, going up from $3.36 to $4.62. So, that's for all irrigation discretionary water use above the average that we noticed in Broomfield. So, looking a little bit deeper at some of these numbers here. So, we've got approximately 51.8% of customers fall in that first tier. So, they would see an increase in the base fee. Everybody's going to experience that same increase in the base fee. But for the water that they're using to do, again, the domestic use, the indoor water use, the cooking, the cleaning, the showers, they're going to see a decrease of $3, from $3.36 to $2.30 for their usage in that level. The next tier, the 5,000 to 20,000, you've got roughly 37.66% of your customers fall in that tier. So, they're going to see a 4 cents per 1,000-gallon increase for that water use between 5,000 and 20,000, and then, about 10.5% of your customers fall in that upper tier there, where they're going to see a little bit higher increase in their water use for over 20,000 gallons of water use a month. And next slide, please. And that takes us to wastewater, so I'll let Michael talk.
So, as Kevin said, I will be presenting the wastewater to you guys. So, if we want to go to the next slide, we'll dive right in. So, just to reiterate on what Kevin said, two of the things we typically look at are our cash and our debt service coverage. So, obviously, the red numbers are bad. We don't want red numbers, right? So, under the current projections, as you can see, we run a negative cash balance, which unfortunately, Broomfield cannot spend cash. We do not have, right? And then, the debt service coverage requirement. So, as you can see, that very bottom line, our debt service coverage goes below 1.2x. And essentially, what that means is, is with your bond covenants, your bondholders, you would be in technical default, and we want to avoid that at all costs. So, doing nothing is currently not an option. So, if we go to the next slide, this is just a graphical illustration. And so, once again, as you can see, our blue bar, which is our revenues, and our tan bar, which is our expenses, our expenses way exceed our revenues, so we cannot have that. So, and we run a negative fund balance. So, we cannot do nothing. We have to raise rates, unfortunately. So, we go to the next slide. Similar to water, proposing very modest rate increases. So, in 2023, we're looking at a 5% rate increase. 24 and 25, we're looking at a 4% rate increase, and then, 26 and 27, we're looking at a 3% rate increase. And just like Kevin said, to reiterate, O&amp;M costs are going up. We have to fund capital projects. We have to meet our debt service coverage, which unlike on the water side, we're not being down on the sewer side. So, we have to make sure that we're good with our bondholders so that we don't fall either in default or technical default. We could also cover that debt service coverage. So, under this scenario, we'll be able to meet all of our financial metrics and our requirements.
Michael, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Absolutely.
So, can we be clear here? We're talking about revenue increase, not rate increase, right?
Correct. Just like what Kevin said, we're talking about revenue increase. And unlike with water, where we're proposing a structural rate increase, sewer, we're keeping the rate structure the same. So, this actually will correlate compared to water, sewer, for the most part. If you see a 5% revenue increase, in theory, your bill will go, should go up around 5%, for example. Because we aren't proposing a different rate structure. So, therefore, like I said, the revenue increase and the rate increase on the sewer side should be fairly correlated with each other, unlike on the water side. Next slide, please. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry. I should probably ask that before. Okay. All right. So, now, under the proposed projections with those rate increases applied, as you can see, we now have no longer any red numbers on our graphic here. So, we generate plenty of cash. Our debt service coverage is strong. And typically, we like to see a target of 1.5x, just so you guys know, for debt service coverage, because that makes you guys look extremely healthy to the bond market, because we're not coming close to that minimum requirement. We're showing we have some extra cushion as well in case, you know, like we're in a situation now where we have high inflation, things of that nature that may draw down on our cash that we have available to pay our debt service coverage. Next slide, please. So, as Kevin said earlier, and to reiterate, you guys have two different methods of billing your sewer customers. One is by average winter consumption, which is based off two cycles. Customers are either, it's determined by their bill, their usage from November to February, or from December to March, is how it's structured. So, based off what cycle you fall in, you take that four-month period, and then, you take the average of that four-month period, and that's your average winter consumption, and that's the fixed bill you will pay over the entire year until the preceding year, when we recalculate what that average winter consumption is based off your water usage. So, as you can see here, a customer using 6,000 gallons of AWC, their bill will go up by about a dollar. And then, there's also other components that are charged to wastewater. So, we have something called a federal mandate, which essentially is, on top of that $3.46 that you currently pay per 1,000 gallons of usage, you also pay an additional 52 cents and that per 1,000 gallons, as well as a as well as an environmental compliance fee, which is a flat fee of $4 that every sewer customer will pay regardless of their water usage. Next slide, please. So now we're getting to the ERUs. So like I said, this is the second component. So it's determined if you're going to pay AWC or ERU based off whichever bill produces the highest bill. So under this method, if you're billed as one ERU, so this is based off a single-family customer billed at one ERU, your bill's going to go from $18.36 to about $19.04. And then same thing on top of the charge per ERU. We have the federal mandate charge and the environmental compliance fee charge. That will be in addition on top of the sewer bill. That's not related to Broomfield specifically in your cost. Next slide, please. So now we're getting to new customers because they actually build a little bit differently. Because as Kevin said, we don't have an average winter consumption established for them yet. So we can't set exactly what that rate needs to be. So this is allotment of 6,000 gallons. So an equivalent residential unit is how they're charged. It's only a flat fee. So a current customer or a new customer coming online will pay $20.76 currently. And under the proposed rate structure, they'll pay $21.78 plus the additional federal mandate charge and the environmental compliance fee that are set also at a fixed fee because we don't have an average winter consumption established yet. So those fees you'll see are a little bit different from what was on the previous slides, at least for the federal mandate charge, because we don't have an average winter consumption to calculate the 52 cents per 1,000 gallons times the average winter consumption. Next slide, please. And then this is just a graphical illustration of, once again, how you compare to your neighbors. So this is under the proposed rates. So as you can see, under the proposed rates, Broomfield's all the way to the left. So actually, your average customer should be seeing a decrease in their bill based, based off this graphic. And once again, we're below the average line of, I think it was $121, since I know it's not listed here. Next slide, please.
All right. Want to take it back over, Kevin?
All right. So now we're moving into reuse, which is a little bit of a different animal than the other two utilities that we looked at. So next slide, please. So here we've got the current projections and the financial scenarios. So again, right off the bat, a little bit different picture than what we saw for both water and sewer. The beginning fund balance stays positive throughout the, the planning horizon there. It does dip starting in 2025 and again in 2026. It dips down and then it goes back up, which is largely being driven by you've got some pretty aggressive capital expenses in 2024 and 2025. So again, we're approaching what our, our reserves should be by the time we get out to 2027 in the ending fund balance. There wasn't any debt outstanding on the reuse side. So we have no debt service coverage that needs to be met. Next slide, please. And so again, the graphical illustration. So you can see, once those two heavy capital years kick in, we're drawing down the fund balance. We've got some fairly big expenses, but then 2026 and 2027, we've got revenues are exceeding our expenses in both of those years. So next slide, please. We did have some recommendations on reuse though. So the first one, I'll jump down to the second bullet there. No revenue increase at the present time. So as you saw, we had enough money to cover our expenses. There was the couple of years in the middle there where we were drawing down fund balance, but we didn't draw it down into the negative. We still had fund balance available to, to cover any unexpected costs. So we're not recommending a, a rate increase or revenue increase, I should say, at the present time for that. Jumping back up, we did take a different methodology approach to your rate structure as compared to the, to the current rate structure here. So right now, if you remember back to an earlier slide, the reuse rates, the reclaimed rates are set at 50% of the potable water rates. That's something that we fairly often see in the work that we do. It's not uncommon to have it at 50%, 75%, whatever percent of the, of the potable water rate. With Michael and I being the American Waterworks Association members, we like their approach. They tend to gravitate more towards a cost-based approach so that we look at what the total cost of operating the reclaimed system is and then develop rates specific to the reclaimed system based on what the costs that are being incurred are. So that's what we've recommended here. So our recommendation is to move away from the 50% tied to water and go with more of a strict cost-based approach to the reuse rates. And this is something that, as we say at the bottom there, staff will continue to monitor this as the system grows and expenses come in and revenues come in. So that in the future, if we do need revenue increases, they can make those adjustments as appropriate. Next slide, please. So now we're moving into license fees. So this is a whole different animal again altogether. So everything that we've been discussing at this point is based on your existing users. It's based on monthly bills. So the bill that you pay every month, month in and month out. The license fee side of things is going to be for new developments. So new houses being built, new commercial developments being built. These are one-time charges. They're not ongoing charges like we saw on the user fee side, the rate side. Next slide, please. So these are one-time payments. They reflect the demand and costs created by new residential and commu, and commercial development for utility capacity. So you can imagine your treatment plant can only serve so many people. So when a new development comes in, a new subdivision, a new office park complex comes in, they're using up some of that capacity that you have in your water treatment system, in your sewer treatment system. The water rights that you have available to serve customers, all of those have a cost. So as new people come in and use up that capacity, they should pay their proportionate share of that capacity. We don't want to put that burden on existing rate payers so that they're subsidizing the new development. Our, our theory behind the license fees is that new development should pay their proportionate share and growth pays for growth. It's going to be, the funds are going to be used for outstanding debt service and infrastructure that adds capacity to the system. There's some pretty strict regulations on this. So we can't take license fee revenue and pay our operating expenses with it. We can't pay salaries with it. We can't buy chemicals with it. It has to be for either debt service associated with a previous expansion or a future expansion or to build that additional level of capacity in your treatment plant or additional water lines that are running out to the new development. So that's the basis of the last part there, that there needs to be that rational, rational nexus between what we're asking the development community to pay and the benefits that's being provided to them through that fee. So next slide, please. So the system evaluate, system valuation, so this is the same approach that we use for all three utilities, the water, the wastewater and the reclaim. So we looked at what is the value of the assets in the ground today? Somebody else has come here before new development. They've built the infrastructure that's in the ground today. They've paid for that treatment plant. They've paid for the water lines, the sewer interceptors. What is the value of those assets? Once we knew what that was, then we also had to take a step back and say, well, some of these water lines may have been built in 1950 or this sewer line was built in 1970. The fact that we paid X dollars for it in 1970 does not mean that's what we would pay for it today if we had to rebuild the system. So that's the point of the replacement cost. We're bringing those assets up into today's dollars. What would it cost us to build that system today? From that, we then say, it's all well and good that we're bringing it up and we're identifying what the value of that system is today. But we're not asking developers to buy into a brand-new system. That system's been in the ground for many years in some cases. So there's been depreciation on that. So we back out depreciation so that we're asking people to buy into not a brand-new system, but a system that has some wear and tear in it. We've had existing rate payers and existing development has paid money through their user rates, their license fees over time. That's cash that's available to the city to fund some of these expansions going forward that is going to benefit new development. So we're asking development to, to buy into that fund balance that has come before them because it's going to be used to benefit them as well. We also looked at what debt, what debt does the city have that is going to get paid for through rates? So we need to subtract that out from the value of the system. Because if we ask developers to pay for that debt through their license fee, once they connect to the system, they'd be paying it a second time through the rates and we'd be double dipping. So any debt that's going to get paid through rates, we deduct from the valuation of the system. And then the last piece is what additional capital does the city need to build in order to provide service to those new developments? So that gets factored into the system valuation as well. Once we've identified all of that, the next step is for us to identify what's the capacity that can be served by this? How many new TEs, how many new equivalent residential units are going to be able to be served by the system? So that comes up to identifying the fees. So next slide, please. So these are the fees that we have now. So the current fees, water license at 24,756, we're recommending a water fee of $35,000 going forward. So that's an increase of $10,244 to the license fee. The wastewater license fee at 12,559, we're recommending that go up to $14,320. So about a $1,700, $1,800 increase per, per connection. And then the water reclamation license fee, we're recommending to go from 12,378 to 13,240. So about an $862 increase there. Next slide, please. So one of the things that Michael and I always get asked, whether it be on the rate side, the license fee side, is how do we compare to our neighbors? If we adopt these new fees, what position are we compared to our neighbors? It's a great question to ask. It's a very, very difficult question for us to answer. We talked a little bit earlier about apples-to-apples comparisons. This is one of those ones that's very hard to make an apples-to-apples comparison. So some of the, these are some of the factors that affect it. So persons per household. So if you're trying to compare to a neighboring community that has more or less persons per household, they're going to use less water. That affects what the license fee would be, the size of the lot, the age of the system, changes in elevation. If one of your neighbors has to deal with that and has to build the system to accommodate that and you don't, that's going to skew the comparison. Treatment standard methods. Brenda mentioned some unfunded federal mandates earlier. The larger the community, the quicker you have to handle those unfunded mandates. The smaller communities have a little bit more time. So depending upon where they are in meeting those new standards will affect what their fees are. The size of the system itself, are you a relatively small, condensed, not a whole lot of infrastructure? Or are you a more spread-out infrastructure? Is water provided through water rights or purchased from another provider? So this is specific to the license fee. So whereas Broomfield has a lot of water rights that they've gone out and purchased, those are capital items that are captured within the license fee. If one of your neighbors is buying water from a neighboring entity, that's an operational cost. It's not a capital cost, so that wouldn't get factored into their license fee. And then subsidization of, through rates or other revenue sources. Are you, is, are your neighbors or comparables, are they adopting the growth pays-for-growth philosophy? Or are they subsidizing their development through rates? So those are all things that we can't tell when we do the survey. So we try and get as good a comparison as we can, but these are just some caveats that it's not always going to be an apples-to-apples comparison. So next slide, please. So here we have the water license fee. So we've got Broomfield existing, the 24,756, and then the Broomfield proposed at 35,000. So you're in the upper half currently. You're still going to be in the upper half going forward. You'll be leapfrogging Thornton and Superior there. The other thing to make note of here is these are what everybody's fees are today in 2022. We don't know how many of them, if any of them are going to be updating their fees in 2023 and 2024. We always ask the question, I think it's happened maybe once, that somebody said, oh yeah, we're planning on updating it next year. So this is based on the 2022 numbers. We're not sure how that might change next year. Next slide, please. So this is the, the sewer. So again, we're on the upper end existing and we're on the upper end still with the proposed. Again, the same comment, we don't know if any of these other neighboring comparables are going to be updating their fees next year or not. And the bottom line, through the license fees and, and the rates themselves in terms of the comparisons, it's good to know how we compare to the neighbors, but at the end of the day, the costs that we're developing here, the rates that we're developing, they're specific to the cost of providing service in Broomfield. It's, we're not developing rates based on the cost of providing service in Loveland or Boulder or, or somebody else. So it's good to know how we stack up, but at the same time, these are specific costs to, to Broomfield based on your specific scenario and not what everybody else has to for those various reasons that we looked at on the previous slide. So with that, I will turn it back over to Brenda to run through some other considerations.
Thanks, Kevin. Next slide, Jake, please. So just a few things that we wanted to talk about is the Stormwater Utility is something that Broomfield currently doesn't have. And as Kevin mentioned, comparing to other neighboring communities, some communities do have that. So we did work with Will Dan and trying to figure out, is this something that we should be moving forward with? And it was determined that based on the existing needs of what is supported, it's currently supported through the water utility. And therefore, there's enough capacity to be able to meet the existing needs. And therefore, we currently don't need to evaluate or have a stormwater utility as a separate enterprise. So what we'll do is continue to evaluate that. As we grow with the systems and demand increases, we will continue to evaluate that from a staff perspective and determine whether or not we want to pursue a separate enterprise fund specifically for stormwater utility. The other aspect that was really highlighted during this process was improvements to our utility bills. There's a lack of information and data that's provided on those bills. And that really came to light when we were trying to gather the data to be able to quickly assess and, you know, determine and provide the information in order to do an in-depth analysis. So we thought, if we're struggling this much, our residents must be struggling. Or, I mean, if, if they want to know about conservation, how they compare, what does that look like? So what we'll be doing, staff, in the next couple of months, we'll be looking at opportunities to improve that bill, getting feedback of what we can do, how to enhance that. So it provides a better customer experience. And so that's one of the things that we will definitely be looking at. Next slide, Jake. So some of the key takeaways, we know that these utilities are essential to service in Broomfield and that the current rate structure is not sufficient to meet those needs. And we concur with the findings and the studies and in support of the recommendations made by the consultants as far as moving forward in order to meet those capital needs, those operating expenditures, without sacrificing the systems, right? And being able to deliver and provide those essential services. And so also adopting that tiered rate structure to help engage and create the opportunities for conservation. It's just one step towards that. It's not an end-all, be-all in that, but it, at least it's a step in the right direction to be able to address conservation and sustainability efforts. Next slide, please. I know it was a lot. So just to kind of wrap up, in terms of what we are going to do. So this Thursday, we have a public informal engagement session. We're asking the residents to come with their bills. What we'll do is have, we'll have a short presentation, just consolidated version of tonight's presentation, and open it up for questions for them. Since, you know, a study session doesn't allow them to interact, we thought Thursday night, we will have an open session for folks to come, engage, ask their questions, and then also bring their utility bills with them. What they can do is we'll have some computers set up. What does their current bill look like and what is the proposed bill going to look like? For most residents, as we see on the average, they will see a decrease, at least on their water side. And so everybody, as a reminder, will be seeing an overall increase in that flat base fee for the water side and then a nominal increase on the sewer side. But overall, it should not be that much of a, a drastic difference in their current bills. But we welcome and want to give that opportunity to the public to be able to come and do that. So we'll have that opportunity this Thursday. And then we'll continue the conversations around costs, around our systems and how that ties into our overall budget for not just 2023, but even in our current system for the revised 2022 budget. There are those costs in order to, we're seeing a lot of treatment demands, a lot of other aspects in terms of the bids that are coming back for some of the capital expenditures or fees associated with that have tripled in some cases in, in terms of providing certain services. We're looking at what are those licenses, what we pay for our water shares, right? So those increases as well, in order to be able to provide those water, that, those water shares, we need to procure them. And so what are those amounts going to increase to? And, and what is that reflected and what is that impact on the budget? So we'll have that conversation in August. And then in September, we'll come back with the current proposal to adopt this tiered structure as well as looking at, looking ahead at adopting the revenue at a five-year increment. And what that does is allow us to be able to set into place the revenue increases that are needed. Not necessarily the rate increases, but the revenue that we need to generate in order to, based on our capital outlook, based on our operating expenditures and projections, being able to have that with the ability, every year, staff will do the analysis and then come back to council and say, is that still irrelevant or do we need to adjust? And so it's, it's just an option that we're proposing rather than coming back on an annual basis to do that, amending that ordinance. So that's a, that's something that's under consideration that we'll come back for the first and second reading. And then for those proposed rates to become to become effective at the beginning of January, that's, again, at council direction, based on the discussion and what your recommendation is. But currently, staff is looking at proposing and making those changes to become effective in January. And with that, that concludes the presentation for this evening. I know it was a lot, so, but welcome the opportunity to discuss further and answer any questions you all have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ritchie, and Mr. Burnett, and Mr. Cronin. That was an excellent overview for those who need to know the why are we doing this. So, next is council member questions and comments. And first, we have council member Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll echo the comments. A very nice presentation. It was, a lot of data presented very succinctly. I had a couple of questions just in terms of the narrative. I was interested in the historical overview where 10 years ago, the rate study was done, proposed similar increases, only one of them was adopted. And apparently, we stayed in the black through that period, and but now reaching the point where we're not. Can you just explain that, that, you know, there were increases proposed last time, they weren't followed, and why this is different?
So, anytime we do these studies, the projections that we have, they're based on the best available information that we have right now. So, what we've put into our plans is what we think it's going to happen. So, there's various factors that will go into all of that. So, if you're in a period of rapid growth, so if your growth is growing faster than the increase in inflation, then the fact that you're growing faster, you're going to generate more revenues from growth, that's going to take care of the inflationary costs. We're in an environment right now where inflation is very high. As Brenda mentioned, some of the capital costs have tripled since we started the study. So, that's not something that we really saw in the last 10 years or so. We did, but not to the extent that we're seeing it right now. So, again, if we look back at where we were 10 years ago, they would have, the consultants at the time would have developed the plan again, based on the best available information that they have. The picture turned up, it turned out to be rosier than they anticipated it was, so you were able to get by without the, the rate increases that they had projected. We're in the spot where we are now, where we're looking at the financials from where we are today, based on the available information we have today. It would be a, a great world if things went back to the way it was 10 years ago, and you have growth, or costs come down, or whatever the case is. And we don't have to do these rate increases, but that's what we're seeing at this point in time.
So, I assume that you've included in your formula this time, the fact that we still anticipate more growth?
Yes.
That you've baked in, what, the 6,000 more homes that are expected?
Yeah.
And there's an assumption that the inflation that we're seeing now isn't a temporary blip, but something will be more permanent, or at least higher than it has been the last 10 years?
Yeah. We took, we took a conservative approach where we hope it's not going to stay the way it is, but we've anticipated it staying that way for the next few years, and then tail off a little bit towards the outer years of the plan. So, we didn't want to have an overly rose-colored glasses and just say, "Oh, this is a one-year blip, and we'll go back to 2% or 3% rating, uh, inflationary factors next year." So, we did take that into account.
I meant to ask if there was any difference in the CIP, the capital improvements, from the last 10 years versus what we are facing now? Do we have more capital improvement debt? Or do we have more debt now, debt service now than we did 10 years ago?
We didn't specifically look at 10 years ago to compare the debt and the capital program then. I know you did just take on that new debt issuance for Windy Gap. I'm not sure if that was programmed into the previous rate study. If it was, I'm not sure that they would have captured what the actual cost of water rights are today compared to what they were. So, unfortunately, I don't have a
Okay.
a concise answer for you.
I have a question. You were talking a lot of percentages, you know, and so we have a 5% increase followed by 3 by 2. Obviously, the 3 is based on a 5% increase, so it's more than
Yes, it's compounding, yes.
Compounding.
Yeah.
Do you have a table that sort of shows, you know, if we're going from 10 to 14, by the end of these increases, what number are we at for the base charge, and what impact is that on the usage charge? It's not a percent, but a little bit more tangible dollar figure.
Yes. We do within the report. We didn't have it in the presentation ourselves here. We can certainly get
So, I can find that. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Could, real quickly, can you just address how conservation will help the bottom line, just so people can understand? You're encouraging conservation, people to pay less, but that will cover our costs in the long term.
Right. So, it, the conservation piece is a longer-term approach. Some of it is going to be a little, a little bit more immediate. So, the less water you're consuming, the less electricity is being used at the treatment plant, the less chemicals that are required, the less pumping. So, there's going to be some immediate O&amp;M costs associated with that. The longer-term vision, we were just talking about Windy Gap, where you had to go out and purchase some water rights. So, the more we conserve now, the more our portfolio of water rights can serve additional growth going forward. So, we don't need to go back out into the market and purchase that water, which is becoming increasingly more expensive to purchase. So, our existing portfolio can last longer. So, we're not going to be incurring those capital costs going forward either. So, it's a little bit of a, an O&amp;M expense savings now, and then a capital expense savings going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Marsh Holsen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have a few questions. First of all, just a quick question I didn't see in the, in the, that I, maybe I missed over, when we're talking about the reclaimed water customers, who exactly are those? Who buys the reclaimed water?
We're looking at our expert over here in everything wastewater reuse.
Like, like a park's use of the reclaimed water, but is that, does anybody else?
We'll let Ken Redd answer that question. Ken's coming down. And congratulations to Ken, who will now be our second deputy director at Public Works, starting next Wednesday. So, it's actually a good segue to introduce Ken.
Congratulations, Ken.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure being here and getting introduced as the new deputy director. So, thank you. The reuse customers are mainly our parks department. They're one of the larger ones. Interlochen, Business Development, most of that is all irrigated with reuse water. And then Anthem, most of the Anthem, open spaces areas, parks areas all, and then also Arista. Those are our biggest reuse customers.
So, mainly the irrigation type?
Yeah, it's all irrigation for landscaping or golf courses.
Thank you. That's, that's what I was thinking. And the question for the Public Works and utility, I mean, billing, have we considered doing any sort of like average billing for our customers so that, the residents, so they can have a set, like even monthly bill, like the electric utilities will do? For example, like mine, you know, I was looking at my water bill while we were sitting here, and, you know, my usage during the winter months is like 3,000 gallons, and my summer months is much higher. So...
Thank you for the question. We currently do not have that programmed in, and that is not part of our structure in terms of having that consistent monthly billing, similar to what you'd see on your, maybe electric utility, where you can have that set rate for the year and then reevaluated. But we do have the option. What I didn't mention is that individuals, customers of the service that have difficulty paying, we still have the option to work with them on their, on their bills and payments, work out payment schedules, and then also work with our partners, our nonprofit partners, to be able to help them in that support.
Okay. Thank you. And on the capital improvement projects that are listed in here, I know that the expansion to the wastewater treatment facility was, was included in this. Does this proposal, do the, do these include all the capital improvement projects that we anticipate needing based on our increase in, I mean, we've grown so much in the last 10 years. We're going to continue growing. Does, does these projects, are these all included in the debt that we're likely to have?
Thank you for the question, council member Marsh Holsen. Yes, to our best knowledge, we've included it. The, however, the costs are rapidly changing. So, the estimations that were put in for the calculations, there, it's a possibility in terms of what our current projections are. They could fluctuate based on, on what we're seeing. But however, to our best data, we have included everything in terms of what we anticipate, both on the expansion side as well as the treatment for that.
So, we shouldn't have to come back at a later date if we need more improvements? This is, this should include what we're going to need in the next 10 years?
Well, so I, go ahead. So, I wouldn't say it's a, it's, everything is included to our best ability. We, I think there will still be opportunities to take a look at our system and our structure, to really evaluate the, again, the age of the infrastructure, what's happening, the demands, and, and the flow through that, those systems that would require any changes to our capital projections. So, what we'll do is, and that's part of our annual budget process as well, is to work and put out that five-year projection. So, we'll be constantly on an annual basis evaluating our capital projects as part of that. And we'd be building this model to accommodate that and coming back to council with any recommendations to changes.
Okay. And does this also include, I know there's been a discussion about business improvement, development agreements that we've had, specifically things like if we're, you know, if we develop northwest of I-25, Highway 7, that area, my understanding is that there are agreements in, in there that require us to do infrastructure for those developments? That, my understanding?
So, I'd have to take a look. I know that we've talked about east of I-25, like the infrastructure that's needed up there. We would have to take a look at those development agreements. And I know that we're coming back, and I don't have the calendar, usually I'm the one with the calendar that's saying, "Hey, Jen, it's this date." So, we're coming back in August, though, to talk about those development agreements. So, it might be a better question for that time.
I guess the question is, if there is water sewer infrastructure required in those developments, agreements, is that, are those included in this proposal?
I see what you're asking. Here comes Katie Ellen. It was a long walk to say, "Yes, they are."
Okay. Good. That's good to know. And then, my, my last set of questions is really about conservation. I mean, we're talking about doing a tiered system for higher-usage customers, which I completely support. During the summer months, I am definitely one of those higher consumption individuals. So, as regards to conservation, what are we looking at? Have we, what are we talking about as far as encouraging those conservation efforts besides just the rate increase? For example, right now, you can get a rebate for a smart water control, sprinkler control for your rain barrel. I know we get, you get a rebate off the, the garden box type thing. But my understanding is that the state was offering money for more zero-scaping type things. Are we looking at offering people to zero-scape, to get rid of their lawns, that type of thing, in conjunction with this?
So, to my knowledge, we have not, but I'm going to double-check with Brenda.
No, that's, you're correct, Ms. Yaman. We have not. I mean, it's something on the radar that we, again, work with our partners at, I believe it's called Central Resource, I could be wrong on the name, but partnering with those types of agencies to be able to help support that. But that, at this current time, the first step was looking at the rate structure, and then working to, again, update our utility bill itself to be able to help align and give folks the data they need to be able to maybe provide those tips and provide that education and outreach component within that. And then, maybe the next phase is something we can look into.
Well, I would also say, from an education standpoint, you know, we have CSU Extension. We work a lot with our master gardeners. I know Environmental Services does a lot of programs around that sustainability, and our team was sustainability. So, I think from an education outreach standpoint, there are things out there. Like, if you go to the Environmental Services page, you can look. I think there was something on zero-scape, and I told Brenda, I say it wrong every time. But you can look at like how you can do that. But to your point, if we're looking at, you know, incentivizing that, that would be a different conversation.
May I understand this? It's a slightly different conversation that we have to have in, but I think it has to be done in conjunction with this, because we're asking customers to pay more. We should also be helping them to spend less at the same time. It's something that I think we should, we should be looking at, at, you know, in conjunction. Along those same lines, we just passed, the previous council passed the ordinance on gray water. But, I mean, to, to, for me to retrofit my house to allow gray water is not a cheap process. So, maybe looking at some sort of incentives for helping that along, too. So, I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. My question's going to be in regards to the rate changes for multifamily and commercial. Are we also going to be seeing more of a tiered structure with those entities, or are they just going to be more like the flat monthly rate like we've seen prior?
That's a good question. So, we're proposing to stick with the uniform rate structure that they have now. With that said, it's going to be a cost-based uniform rate structure, so it's not going to be the same for multifamily. And for commercial, it's going to be specific to their cost, but it'll still, will be a uniform rate structure as opposed to the tiered.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. What then methods are we using with our multifamily and, I guess more specifically, commercial, to incentivize them to use less water since we're not doing it through this tiered structure?
So, on the commercial side, the industry standard is to stick with the uniform rate structure. The theory behind that being, commercial businesses are out to make money, so they're going to be as efficient as they can with their water use to begin with, because they don't want to be wasteful. Because the more wasteful they are with the water, the more water that they use that they don't need, that's going to affect their bottom line. So, the industry logic is they're already being as efficient as they can in order to, to get to their bottom line. We can certainly do, as the other council member suggested, putting out the information about low-flow, taps, and, and some zero-scaping and some of that kind of stuff. On the multifamily side, it's a little bit more complicated to get that, that message in. At least any of the apartments that I lived in before, my utility bill was included, my monthly rent was. So, I really didn't have, again, the incentive to cut back on my water use, because I didn't really know how much I was using. I didn't know how much I was paying. It was baked in the cake, if you will. So, on the multifamily side, it's going to be more trying to be proactive with the owners of the, of the apartment complexes, or the duplexes, triplexes, and more of an educational front as opposed to a tiered rate structure. The other piece with multifamily is, if you get a multifamily, you could have like a, a triplex would be considered multifamily, and you could also have an apartment building with 50 units in it would be multifamily. Trying to develop a tiered rate structure that is equitable so that you get, you know, the, the triplex gets the water that they need is going to penalize the, the complex with 50 units in it. And similarly, if you develop the rate structure tiered so that it accommodates the 50-unit complex, the triplex is never going to get out of tier one. There, so, there's the difficulties there. So, I certainly appreciate the question, and something that we're struggling with as an industry to try and figure that out. But at this point, it's more of an educational approach as opposed to a pricing signal approach.
Thank you. Yeah, as a renter, I'm well aware of how impossible it is to figure out how much water me or any other resident is using on a monthly basis. So, I think those are my only questions right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is council member Lindstat.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just a request. Could we see the methodology on the sewer and water tap fee increases on the comparison between us and our neighboring communities? I was, you know, we were already in that upper third, and I'm, I was a little surprised to see the, the suggestions move us further. And I, I just wanted to see what the, the comparison was. You know, I don't know if it's the water treatment differences, or if they really are subsidized by other communities. But it just seems, you know, given our financial situation, this is pretty strong compared to many of our neighboring communities. I was kind of surprised that we were so far. So, you know, if we're on new development, commercial, residential, whatever it is, I mean, every, every dollar we charge on those hookup fees is going to come back on consumers down the, down the road when those buildings are bought or rented. So, I'd just love to see that methodology and understand what, why we are so far out on the, on the, the, the expensive side for both those fees.
Sure.
And I know, I know it's complex and, and hard to calculate, but I just, I don't know. It seems unusual that Broomfield, you know, we, we don't really have huge elevation comparison, or changes compared to Erie or Nevada, or, you know, I don't know. It just, it seemed a little odd to me. The other question, you know, about three years on council here, I don't think, I, we've had very few conversations about water conservation. We haven't really had a discussion about new developments and adding lawns and new developments, and incentivizing zero-scaping or de-incentivizing lawns, or, I, I, I don't know. I, I feel like it's, it's a big change to draw up on the public, and that maybe, maybe this, the, the, the public education piece needs to catch up, and maybe we need to, you know, prioritize some of these conservation efforts before moving forward with a tiered system. I'm, I'm not sure, but just something to throw out there, because we, we haven't been, it just, I, I, it hasn't felt like a priority I've seen up here. And I, I would like to have some more discussions about what initiatives we can move forward on that front. But those, those are my only two items of feedback right now. I appreciate the work. I know this rate study's been a long time coming, but I just, just had a couple, couple concerns there before moving forward. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Would you like to respond to the, the reasons like why our water tap fees are so much higher?
Well, at this point in time, we know what the assumptions and data went into, to Broomfield's fees. So I made a note to myself to go and try and contact those other neighboring communities and see what I can pull down, either off the internet or get them to send me their last tap license fee, plan investment fee, whatever they happen to call it, study so that I can dig in and, and see what assumptions they used in terms of the assumed water use per account and what their water rights source, what their water sources are, the age of the system, any of those kinds of things so that I can get an answer for you.
I appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I didn't mean to insinuate that our numbers were wrong or anything like that. I just wanted to know.
But they're high.
Yeah, they are high. I just, I don't really, I don't know why they're high. So I just wanted a more clear picture before, before, you know, continuing that trend. So I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Lindstat. I, I do share that concern because I have a lot of constituents on well water and those wells will fail. And it has always been cost prohibitive, you know, for them to get on the tap. And this will make it even further out of reach. So that is, that is something I share. I didn't mean to cut in though. It's Councilmember Schaaf's time.
Thank you, Mayor. It doesn't look like you cut into my time at all. So I had a conversation with our Public Works Director just after I got on council. We were talking about the water conservation plan that had to be passed by council. And we were, I really tried to dig through there and find any other water conservation methods that we could, we could do. And it was pretty, you know, there weren't, there wasn't a whole lot of room to move that. However, he did mention that one of the ways in which we could increase water conservation was through tiered, tiered rate waters, tiered water rates. There we go. And, but, you know, in, in the past and former council conversations has always dismissed this idea that we should move away from that. And one of the reasons was, that was stated by some of the elected officials, was that water costs the same amount regardless of how much you use. And I went with that assumption that that was, that was why we didn't need tiered water rates. However, this has been disproven by other communities around us, most importantly Westminster, saying that the more water you use, the more, the more that your system in general is going to cost. And so that was one reason why Westminster went with the tiered water rates is because the, the larger users were basically being subsidized, their water was being subsidized, or the cost of their water was being subsidized by those lower water users. And so that was one of the reasons. So, you know, I'm, I'm glad to finally see this tiered water rate because there is disparity in there that the, the lowest water users are subsidizing the highest water users in our community. I'm curious from staff, you know, looking at those projections, we don't get too far into this before we, we hit that red. And so I'm curious, is it just because of the pandemic? Is it because of other staffing issues that we've kind of waited so long to get this water study completed? You know, I don't think that we had much time to actually, you know, we don't have much time to, to implement these water rate increases or revenue increases because we would be in the red come next year.
Appreciate the question, Councilmember Schaaf. So in terms of the study, I can't say to why it hasn't been looked at before, but it was pretty evident with the way things were changing in terms of the economic landscape, the things from that perspective, the cost increase and those demands that we really should have been. And again, how it was calculated based on the data available at the time in 2012, we know things have drastically shifted in our operations and our capital needs. Therefore, the recommendation was that we looked at it. So I don't think it was anything based on just more of timing, that it was relevant to look at it now and reevaluate. And then also establish a model, have confirmation that whatever model we do establish, we're comfortable with, staff is knowledgeable and well versed in the model as well, to come forward to make those recommendations and, and be able to assess and understand and then be able to calculate whether or not we're on trend. And if there's any flexibility, meaning if the current projections are, say, next year, a 5% revenue increase and then a 3% revenue increase for the, the water system, but our calculations say, you know, costs have come down and inflation, so we don't need as much revenue, we could theoretically then come back and say, okay, we're only going to recommend, you know, a 1% increase to the system. So I think what it does is establishes based on current needs and current data.
Okay. All right. Thanks. So looking more in, in that tiered water rate structure, this was something that, that you had mentioned in terms of kind of the expense of a tiered weight water rate system can cost operationally more because there's different bills that are going to be, needed to be completed. So I guess both, both to you as well as staff, does the expense of doing that billing, which will require more work outweigh the savings that will, that will happen if we did a straight water rate system?
So there, there's usually going to be some initial questions of customer service. When you get a new bill and you've changed the rate structure or when rates have gone up, there's always going to be a certain percentage of customers that will call it a customer service. I don't understand my bill. Why did my bill go up? Why I used to pay this much? So that usually subsides within the first couple of bills that go out. There's certainly a cost to that. It takes up staff's time to be able to, to, to do that as opposed to some of their, their other duties. But at the same time, the hope is that that cost is less than what it would cost to go out and acquire the additional water resources to be able to, to continue to expand the system and that the conservation will outweigh, the savings from having to purchase additional water would be a savings as compared to some additional questions or confusion potentially associated with the, the changing to a different rate structure, if that answers your question.
That, that does. Thank you. So looking at those tiers, so I understand the methodology for the 5,000, less than 5,000, seeing as, as that was kind of average. But then the next tier is 5,001 to 20,000. Why such a big range and could there be, could we break up that, that range into maybe two tiers or so going 5,001 to 10,000 and then 10,001 to 20,000? Why not break that tier up a little bit more?
We certainly could. So when we looked at the billing data, we looked, so as I said, the 5,000 was representative of indoor water use. The 20,000 seemed to be representative of the summertime use, so that $15,000 increment there. So that's why we chose that 20,000 gallon because that represented irrigation use within the billing system. We certainly could go zero to five, five to 10, 10 to 20, and then over 20 or, you know, zero, five, five to 15. There's nothing that is holding us to the, to the tiers that we developed. It made sense to Michael and I as we were developing it, but that doesn't mean that because it makes sense to us that that's the way that it has to be. So we've got flexibility there.
Okay, thanks. So you, you had also mentioned that the larger meters, and correct me if I'm wrong, that larger meters are necessary for commercial and multifamily. Did I get that correct?
That's generally true, yes.
Should there be larger water meters for high volume users? Or are those not required for like a single family that's using over 20,000 gallons? Is that, is a larger meter needed for that level of a user?
I'm getting a little bit out of my element in terms of capacity of meters and, and developing for, for needs. But our experience is that a three quarter inch meter, which is the standard size for single family residential in, in Broomfield is adequate for meeting up to that 20, 25, 30,000 gallon a month range. We do, Michael and I work across the country. So we will see some places in Arizona where they've got two acre lots and they might go up to a one inch meter for a, for a two acre lot where they've got, you know, 100,000 gallons, 200,000 gallons of water use every month. But for the range that we're talking about here, I believe that a three quarter inch is, is adequate.
Okay, perfect. License fees. So I'm curious about license fees. And could those be tiered similar to the water rates so that you have a smaller, you know, smaller development that's being constructed? Could the license fee be cheaper than say a multifamily or a commercial or a large development? Could you have tiers on that? Or is that going to be more of just a straight license fees in terms of cost regardless of how big or small the development is?
There's not a tier per se in the same way that we have on the water rate side. But what we have seen in the industry is that there will be two components to the license fee. So there will be an indoor water use component. So it'll, it'll make an assumption that a single family home needs 5,000 gallons of water a month times 12 months. So that will be one component of the license fee. And then what they will do, and Aurora is one of the ones that does it this way, they will then go and measure the lot size and they will say you need X amount of water per square foot of lot size. So that the, the license fee that gets paid in Aurora is going to be the combination of the indoor water use allotment. That's going to be the same for everyone. And then there's going to be an outs, an outdoor irrigation component to the license fee. So it would vary based on the type of development and how much lot size you have and how much zero scape versus irrigable area you have. So it is a way to move the license fee, but it's not tiered to the same extent where, you know, this license fee is for up to, you know, 10,000 gallons a month. This license fee is for up to 20,000 gallons a month. I have not seen that done that way.
Okay, thanks. So Ms. Ritchie, you had mentioned kind of utility bill improvements. You know, one, one comment that I've heard is the quick turnaround for billing, you know, paying of those bills. So right now, I think, I can't remember if it's two weeks or something like that, but it's a short period of time. I think that's one bill, that's one improvement that could be made with the utility bills is just a little bit more time to pay that bill. So it's not such a quick turnaround of when that bill comes and then when it needs to be paid. And then I'm curious with the, the rates. So we, we had talked about with a previous rate study that this was going to be more of a smoothed out effect so that it was 2% every year as opposed to taking one big hit upfront and then kind of going smaller. Could we smooth this out as in, instead of just, you know, kind of having a 5% increase right off the bat?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Schaaf. So in terms of keeping in mind the segregation between the, the revenue need versus the rate increase. So the revenue increased because we did not increase 2022 rates. So that was one of the things we last adopted, the, in 2020, December of 2020 is when we adopted the 2021 rates, which we've carried through normally, we would have adopted an increase for 2022. However, based on doing the study and where we were, we thought it was sufficient. But recognizing the changes, there was a need for the 5%. So in terms of the smoothing, that can come into play, but again, we, we will still, it'll be part of our analysis on an annual basis when we look at the revenues and expenditures coming in for the system. So that will be part of our process. We can certainly look at what makes sense in terms of what revenue, true revenue generation is needed. Right now, it's the future is based on the anticipated. The reason for the 5% increase is we are not proposing any changes. We're in the middle, towards the end of July, so not doing anything with the rate structure since we haven't touched it for 2022 and then doing that for 2023.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, to your question about the additional meter sizes, we do have areas that have a, from a residential standpoint, that do have one inch meter lines based on that flow. So there are areas within Broomfield where we have a majority of that residential would be a three quarter inch meter. However, we do recognize based on certain lot sizes, certain areas that do require a one inch meter.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim?
Yes, in, within the license fees, was there any thought given to distinguishing between the tap fee for a new development versus an existing homeowner who wants to get into the, tap into the water system and was previously on well water or something?
We looked at it in terms of anybody that's going to be connecting to the water system going forward. So in this case, if they were on wells before and they're not using the water system today, when they do tap into the water system for purpose of, purposes of the analysis, we would treat them the same as a new subdivision or a new office park that comes in. Because they're not currently on the system today, so they would be the same as a new development.
Okay. And I'm not, with our affordable housing issues that we were trying to encourage ADUs, I don't think that has got much traction so far, but does an ADU need its separate water and sewer tap license?
Katie Ellen says no.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Or Anna said no. One of them said no.
Save them officially. It's no.
Okay, that's good because that would be cost prohibitive, I mean, when we're trying to encourage ADUs. Okay. I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Ward's comment. I find it a little unsettling that non-residential customers can maintain a uniform rate. I know you explained that as it's the industry standard, but I would like to, if, if, if we see the tiered structure as incentivizing conservation, I would like to have it across the board. I understand what you explained with the multifamily complexities, but I, I don't see why we couldn't consider it with commercial customers having a tiered structure. I read this, I had already read before Councilmember Ward mentioned it, I'd already noted that the, the memo says that their incentive is to keep their costs as low as possible in order to maximize profits and that's why you don't give them a tiered structure. Well, I would contend that every residential user wants to keep their costs as low as possible just to put money in their pocketbook. So I don't, I don't find those arguments about why a non-residential customer would, would continue with a uniform rate as convincing to me. So I don't, I don't know if any of my other council members share that concern at all, but. Okay, thank you. And as far as education, I mean, I would like to reiterate that as a, as a real need here that we need to incent, have a lot of education upfront in order to encourage people, inform people how to go forward with conservation. I, I did know there, there was a bill that passed at the, in the state legislature this year, HB 221151, that was supportive of a turf replacement program, but it was only the very beginning of that program. It just set up the board to develop the program and it only was funded with $2 million. $2 million at the state level isn't going to get us anywhere. So unfortunately, I don't think we can look to the, to the state for funding for that zero scape, those zero scape efforts that we would, you know, want to see go forward to encourage conservation at the local level. So I think those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson from Ether.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple more questions. This was super helpful listening to all the answers so far. But I was noticing that the water comparison tables were based on 163,000 gallons per year, which is 13,583 gallons per month. And I'm just wondering if that is the average for our residential uses? Then can you provide more information on the decision to use the 5,000 gallons per month for the first year as opposed to using 10 or 12 or 14,000 gallons per month? There's that, and I also did take a look, I was looking back at all my utility bills and it varies drastically. Where we're down at 3,000 gallons a month and up at, you know, higher to that, closer to 20,000. So is that because summer or the winter months are more like 5,000 gallons per month? I'd love some clarification on that.
Yeah, so when we, the, the winter months were definitely that, that 5,000 gallon range as opposed to the summer months where you're going to see the higher, the higher use. But as we looked at the averages as a whole, Michael was... Yeah, yeah, the, the winter months, we were coming up with that 5,000 gallons a month, which is why we use that for that, for that base tier.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful. So we're really trying to get people to conserve on the, the water and the lawns, I take it.
Correct.
That's where the, the savings are going to come in. And I was just thinking as you're looking at these utility bills, and this is just a comment for the utility bill. I know our, like, energy bills, they show the past two years, I think it is, where you see like the, the current year and then compared to the previous year. If we could do that on our water bills, that would be tremendously helpful because I did not realize just how much more water we were using in the summer. I guess I never looked that closely. So that's just a comment. And then I want to go look, ask a couple more questions on the residential versus non-residential. And I share Councilmember Lim's concern about the rate being different. I noticed for residential, they would be paying 462 per 1,000 gallons above 20,000 gallons per month, whereas the non-residential would still be down at 336 per month unlimited. Yeah, yeah, I question the, the same thing is are they really watching their bottom line that closely that they would conserve? So I guess my, my question is how much water is used by residential overall versus non-residential overall? Is that really, is the non-residential really a big piece of the water usage or is it mostly residential? residential?
Your residential customers make up the bulk of your customers, but I'll have to go back and, and get Brenda an answer on how much water is used between those two customer classes for you.
So Councilmember Anderson, I would say though, and again, I'm, my phone a friend, Jeff Romine in the back, right, that knows all these different businesses, restaurants do use a lot of water. And depending on, somebody was just telling me the other day that like, in certain restaurants, like if they have a walk, you have to keep those walks like constant, I think it was Ken that was telling me that, that you have to constantly use water to keep those at a certain temperature or something like that. So there are businesses like restaurants that do use quite a bit of water, if that's helpful.
It is, and that's something I was remiss in, in talking, this, the same explanation that I gave on the multifamily, how it can be very difficult to develop a tiered rate structure for multifamily, given the variety within the, the class. The same holds true for the, for the non-residential class, the commercial class. You could have a mom and pop bookstore where there's only an employee bathroom in it that's a commercial customer. You could have a King Supers or a Safeway that is also a commercial customer. So trying to develop a tiered rate structure that accommodates both of those can be difficult. It's not to say that we can't dig deeper into the data and take another look and see if there are reasonable breakpoints to make a tiered rate structure, but that, that was me being remiss in mentioning that earlier, so my apologies.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, but I, I really would like to look a little closer at that because we have, they're still paying 336 versus 466, 462 per 1,000 gallons, you know, and how, really how many, how many non-residential customers really are up at that, above 20,000 gallons level? That could be an interesting thing to see if we're, if there, if there should be an increase there to ensure that water conservation really is happening. So that is all my questions, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next is Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm agreeing with my colleagues here who certainly are raising the issue of conservation again. What, what I struggle with is I, I don't see a long-term look here. We're, we're looking a few years ahead, talking about rates in particular, without tying directly to how the rate and conservation systems might work together. And in particular, what are the targets that we'd like to establish? Water is becoming a more severe issue for us and it's not going to get better, probably in our lifetimes. So I would like to suggest, Mayor, that we take a, a longer view here and, and try to define some targets where we would like our consumers to be, whether they're commercial or whether they're homeowners or renters, whatever. Right now, it's just kind of whatever they're doing, we're kind of picking averages and we're using those numbers and that's fine, that's normal. But I think we need to take a more deliberative approach here. Councilmember Lindsted suggested heavier and, and Councilmember Lim as well, a heavier emphasis on the conservation side. I, I do think rates and conservation need work together because rates can be a disincentive to spend, but to what Councilmember Anderson just said, which is probably all of us, gee, I had no idea, I never looked that closely at my, my bills. I mean, that's, that's normal, we don't, we pay them and some of us even have them on an automatic, you know, bank thing, right? So we don't even know. So I believe strongly in defining targets, determining where we want to be, and then being able to set strategies in place that may in fact evolve over time in order to help us to get to those targets that we're, we're trying to establish. And I don't see that now. Given your national experience, perhaps you know of other municipalities that are doing something along those lines that you could refer us to and, and we could learn from them. But I think water, frankly, it, it is inexpensive right now compared to probably what it should be. Not that I'm suggesting we, we want to charge a whole lot more, but it, it is a real problem. And I think we need to take it as the leaders in this community extremely seriously and not just be looking at a, kind of a statistical rate increases alone, but set some targets, some goals that we can develop strategies both to help educate, somebody mentioned education earlier, we can help educate, we can expand on programs like Garden in the Box and the Turf Replacement Program. I think we need to be doing that, not just countywide, but, but statewide and probably nationally. So I'd like to see us try to do more in those areas. Maybe that doesn't stop the journey we're on right now in terms of setting these rates. I know that there's a timeliness issue here, but I think we need to take a much longer view here. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, I, I do appreciate that and I think that's everybody that's spoken on the first round. So yeah, I have to go back to page three of the memo where the utility funds historical overview chart was there with the 2012 rate study proposed increases. In 2014, a 6% increase was suggested or recommended and there was a 0% rate increase. In 2015, there was another 6% increase recommended and there was a 0% increase and so on. So that, I look at that and that's, that's what you call kicking the can. So just want to give credit where credit's due. So we're not going to kick the can. We, we don't have a choice but to, you know, modernize the structure so that we can sustain our water supply. But clearly you need direction and I don't think we went through that. We are, this is scheduled in September 13th.
I think so for first read.
For a vote. So what's the direction that you need?
So I think a couple of things. I mean, I think Councilmember Leslie summed it up fairly well. I think it's a yes and. These rates are timely. So if we want to look at other incentives, I mean, that was basically what Councilmember Marsh Holson started the conversation around incentivization, we can do that. There's a cost that comes with that. We'll have to identify revenue again, right? We've been talking about priorities since March, right? Like if this is going to be a sustainability type priority, we have to identify where those funds would come from, what does that program look like? So my suggestion would be we need to move forward on the, on the rate study or on the suggestions and recommendations from the rate study and then also look at how do we incorporate more education and possibly the incentivization part.
Fair enough. So we'll do a second round and maybe get some clarification on that.
That'd be great.
All right, starting with Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a fantastic summary, Abby, I just must say. But my first question again is going to be in regards to commercial developments. How are there, I guess, how are they metered when they're developed? I know like for multifamily and apartments and condos, or at least for apartments, each unit is not individually metered, it's the entire complex as a, as a unit. Is that also the same case with developments like you see with over off of 287 in Miramonte where you have like King Supers and it's attached per se with some restaurants and other businesses? Or are they kind of lumped together in that same philosophy of the whole complex is metered as just one entity? I apologize for that intricate question.
No, thank you for the question. I, I think it'd be better if we can go back and give you a comprehensive of how the structure is broken down for each individual types of, so we have what's called the equivalent residential unit for certain areas, right? So we'd need to go back and I can, I can provide a breakdown, maybe an easier table that would help with how are things classified in terms of the rate structure.
And that would be for business perspective?
For business, our commercials, so we currently have information, we collect the data based on the number of counts, based on the number of units within that type of classification or category. So, you know, for maybe a church versus a commercial unit versus an irrigation only type of account, if you will. So we have those classifications broken down and I think what would be helpful is to share that with council, to be able to see that breakdown.
Okay, so that breakdown is kind of in the same way, we know how much water is being used for our different residential units based on the time of year, correct?
Correct.
Right, perfect. I do think that we should proceed forward with the rate study as you, as staff has proposed, but I would like to see us go a little further into the commercial aspect because I don't think there are, the businesses acting in that particular manner 100% of the time. Some may not be able to afford it, some may not care, some may not even know really how much water they're using compared to their peers.
Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holson.
Thank you, Mayor. So on the conservation aspect of this, something you've said made me think about, a question I had. So, you know, I live in a corner lot, I have a lot of grass, I've been planning on doing zero escaping, but I often don't look at my bill because I, it's on auto payment. But I was just looking at my bill and my bill is well over 20,000 gallons in the summertime. So the tiered rate will affect me. But the, on the conservation side of it, can we, since it's an enterprise fund, I guess the question is can we pay for those incentives from the enterprise fund? Can we charge a higher rate for the large consumers to offset the cost of incentivizing conservation, I guess is the question? Is that legally allowed to do?
So I'm going to look at Brenda, because enterprise funds, you got to be careful. I just want to make sure we don't misspeak here.
Right.
So can we, can we pay, for example, can we give a rebate on a garden in the box out of the enterprise fund, I guess is the question.
If it would pertain to our, if it came from our usage charges that tied to the operations, because that would be considered an operational program, not a capital expense, which is then paid from a growth perspective. But again, we'd need to, I'd want to research and confirm that from a legal perspective, but I believe that.
And can it be done both? Because for example, if, for example, the usage charges don't make enough to offset all the cost of the, of the incentive program, can it be paid for partially out of the enterprise fund and partially out of general funds? Is that something that can be done?
So I think we want to research that. I don't, I don't want to misspeak there, it's a good question, we need to research that a little bit.
That's the only question I had, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lindsted.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I totally forgot to give a more specific direction during my first set of comments. I, I, yeah, I mean, I think we can't kick the, the can down the road. You know, councils have done that in the past and now here we are trying to, trying to come up with, you know, incentives and all kinds of things, you know, when we only have a few months to really think about this. So, yeah, I think we need to move forward with the, the water and sewer rates. But I'll, I'll just, I'll just say right now, I mean, I'm going to have a really hard time voting to make our, our tap fees the, the highest in the, the north metro as an outlier. I mean, they're already high, so I'm, I'm, I'm having a really hard time with that aspect of these rates. So I, I'd love to see that back up and, and have a really thorough understanding of, of why that is. And if it comes to that vote, I don't, I don't know. I, I, I think they're very high already, so I'll just put that on record, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaft.
Thanks, Mayor. So looking at the, the next steps in terms of the first kind of next step, which is July 21st, is the public engagement informational session. So looking at kind of the timeline for that, at this point, we're assuming that what's been proposed is what's going to be discussed on the 21st, is that correct?
Correct. I'm looking at Brenda to verify that, yes.
Okay, so, so tiered water rates is going to be a big change for our community where this hasn't been something that has been in the past, but will now is what's being proposed. And so that's going to be a big conversation and, and, you know, just looking at a couple days, for many of our residents, this is going to come as a big shock, you know, in terms of what does this mean, what does this mean for me, what does this mean for our community? So I think that, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that this has already started to get out there in terms of social media, in terms of what this is going, you know, that this event's going to happen, but I think that we're going to have to educate a lot, you know, a lot more in terms of what that, what tiered water rates is going to look like, how that's going to change my bill and things like that. That's going to be a big, you know, piece of the conversation, let alone just are my rates going to go up? Because those are kind of two different things. One of them is how my rates are going to go up, the other one is are my rates going to go up? So I think those are two different things and I think that we're going to have to educate our community on those.
So Councilmember Shaft, to your point, I think part of why we're being a little bit strategic in how we roll this out is because we wanted to get the direction from council. We want to give the residents opportunity like you talked about on Thursday to come in and just even know what your usage is, right? And kind of engage with if this goes forward, this is what this will look like. Part of that timeline you saw at the end on the slide for implementing the rates in January is so we have that good amount of time. Obviously, if you do a first and second reading, you'll have public hearing, people can ask questions during public comment, but that also gives us plenty of time to roll this out to the community so they know what's going to happen. They're very aware before the changes take place. And I know, I'm looking at Brenda, but I'm pretty sure that she's had conversations with our communications team about how we can get that information out. We were just being strategic because we wanted to make sure we had clear direction from council before we rolled that plan out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. So with that, looking at how those rates are going to increase, is there a proposal for if we did not do a tiered rate system and what those rates would look like without a tiered rate system?
That's a good question. I'm going to look at Brenda or...
We can run that pretty quickly and tell you what the, the residential rate would be if we didn't go with a tiered.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I would like that information and I think to, you know, Councilmember Lindsted's point, looking at those tap fees, I think that we do need some more information around those as well before we see that in September. So that's all I have for now, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Leslie.
Good, thank you. I just, I had asked kind of a pointed question a while ago, but you, you weren't really given an opportunity to respond. That was, do you know of other municipalities that are doing anything in a more directive manner in terms of, of setting targets or creating structures to help the, the residents manage their water use?
We do, we do a lot of work in California and California is more on the forefront, for lack of a better term, in terms of the conservation out there. So a lot of what we see going on out there, and I'm just picking numbers now, but they'll have, the current water use is 200 gallons per capita per day and they'll set a target that next year we want to bring that down from 200 to 190 or five years from now, we want to see that go from 200 to 150 gallons per capita per day. So that's kind of their base plan, their target, I think, that you're referring to. So then they build the rest of the plan around, okay, this is 200 gallons per day, capita per day now, we want to get to 150 in five years, how do we develop a plan to get there incrementally?
Yeah, I, I mean, it would be great if, if you could maybe share what you think would be kind of best practice municipalities. Also, I would like to see if there are other entities we can collaborate with. I know in the past, other municipalities I've lived in, they've provided, you know, showerheads that are more restrictive and things like that, tools to help the homeowner know, well, there is something in fact I can do. Now, maybe those are in everybody's homes by now, but I suspect not. And I suspect if we could create some kind of partnership like we have with the Garden in the Box organization, Abby, what's the name of that organization? The Resource or something?
Central, yeah, Resource Central or Central Resource, I always say it backwards.
Yeah, and there may be others and maybe not just, they may not even be here in Broomfield yet, but, but I, I would love to see anything we can do to help the owner not have that sticker shock of, by the way, my home is also being reappraised at the same time and the timing is not real good on this thing, frankly. Too bad it, it did get kicked down the, down the highway. So a lot of things coming together and I just, the more we can do, not just in education, but in also providing resources so that homeowners can actually do something about it would be great.
Brenda, did you have something you wanted to add?
To follow up on that, Councilmember Leslie, Resource Central also in partnership, we do a water audit program and that's listed on our website and we can certainly work to, you know, help with that outreach again, for that education component, but there is that program that currently exists.
And, and that's wonderful, but again, my, my only concern is probably very few people know about it. And, you know, giving them higher rates and then saying at that point, oh, by the way, you can go to our website, I mean, we, we need to get out in front of that, I think is my, my thing. But I, I would very much appreciate it if you wouldn't mind, and I know I, I'm just one person here, I, I don't have the authority to direct you and I'm not trying to do that, I'm just asking if you have some.
Sure.
Examples, I, I think that would really help council see that, in fact, there is a model that we might want to consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll also add my voice to the questions about the tap fees. It's not just that we're at the highest, but we're highest by a significant margin. I'd be curious to how we can make that less painful or not quite so huge a gap compared to our neighbors. I did want to just real quickly say I agree, education is, would be a huge thing going forward.[1800.86] forward. I think, you know, increased cost is a great incentive, but education would have a great role too, because I think there's some opportunities out there for us to incentivize conservation. I know Excel Energy used to send me emails about how much energy I was using compared to my neighbors, which was highly annoying. Because I had teenagers, what was I going to do? But it might be something we could look into. And also note that there are other communities such as Castle Rock and Greeley, which have some sort of rebate programs that they will pay you to, it's basically cash for grass, and pay you to zero scape or somehow remove the amount of lawn that you are sprinkling. I think Las Vegas has a program similar, they pay residents 40 cents for every square foot. So I, if conservation saves us money, that might be some way to lessen the increase and reduce our water usage over time, to Councilmember Leslie's point that a long-term conservation goal is needed. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lim?
I was reflecting on what you said in passing, that I wonder if it at least initially addresses without, I would like to see the greater amount of data with the tap fees too. You alluded to the fact that because Brimfield is making an investment in our water rights with Chimney Hollow, for example, that goes into our tap fee funding, as opposed to other communities where they're borrowing annual water rights, water rights as needed, that that goes into their rev, their revenue funding. So I'm, that's what is going through my mind, is when we see we're at the top with the tap fees, but we tend to be at the lower end with the operation, the operational cost. So that, in my mind, that inverse is kind of making sense with the way we have met our water needs. Now, I agree with the rest of my colleagues, I'd like to see those numbers, you know, for the tap fees, but that, that's what initially hits me as kind of a preliminary explanation. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson, would you like to weigh in?
Sure. Thank you. I agree with what I'm hearing here. I would like to see the numbers between the tap fees, why that is so much higher than neighboring communities, but I also understand, might just be the way we're structuring it. So that would be good information. I definitely want to move forward with the rate study and making sure that we're going ahead with the changes in rates for the next several years. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So does that give you enough guidance for the next visit?
It does. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Great. Well, thank you all so much for this long overdue discussion, and I'm happy we're able to move forward. Thank you very much. This was comprehensive, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Our final study session item this evening is a discussion regarding planning and engineering permit and plan review fees. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, and I'll ask our staff to begin the discussion. Did I forget something?
Did you want to take a 10-minute break, Mayor?
Oh, look at the time!
I know, it's just flown.
Oh, it was, so much fun! We're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 8:42.
Sorry, Anna.
8:42. Welcome back, everyone. Our final study session item this evening is a discussion regarding planning and engineering permit and plan review fees. Council has a copy of the agenda memorandum, and I'll ask our staff to begin the discussion.
All right. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Anna Burton Zetti, who is our Planning Director and Co-Director for Community Development. Anna?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. If I could have the next slide, please. So over the last few months, we've had a number of study sessions. These have reviewed current development, residential growth, tools utilized during development review, infrastructure impacts on, on Brimfield and the commercial development market. This fourth study session in the series provides city council and the Brimfield community with an overview regarding fees associated with development reviews. So the focus is really specific to the planning and engineering fees in this particular memorandum, but we also provide a general overview regarding fees that are collected related to development. Fees associated with development impact both new development as well as existing businesses, property owners, or residents that are making, that are looking to make an investment into their own properties, businesses, or residences. As the city council considers potential modifications to any particular development fee, it's critical to be aware of how this fee increase may impact future development and redevelopment, and relates to other fees associated with development. Next slide, please. As part of Brimfield's focus on financial sustainability, city council can consider whether it's appropriate to move forward with a fee structure for development review, which results in a larger or a full recovery of the costs of providing development review services. Additionally, there are review services that are currently provided by Brimfield where there are no fees currently collected. And those would be... And so, we could establish fees for those permits or services that have not historically collected fees. Many development applications do require extensive review through a public hearing process in Brimfield. This process is staffing and time-intensive, but it also allows for a thorough review of development projects as well as engagement by the community. If Brimfield were to shift to a fee based on the cost to administer those reviews, it could make development of smaller projects cost prohibitive for the development review within Brimfield. Alternatively, Brimfield could look at a phased approach, or could consider raising the current application fees, but not seeking an immediate goal of recovering 100% of the administrative costs. Additional study in consideration could then be done in the future to consider further raising the fees if it is determined that a full recovery is the ultimate goal. Next slide, please. We provided a table in the memorandum regarding some of the potential planning fees that could be considered for increases. We had an ultimate goal to provide a simplified fee structure and try to keep the fees relatively unchanged for projects that were smaller, related to small business, redevelopment efforts, things that utilize less staff time. I also included on this slide just a few of the examples, since trying to include the entire table made it illegible at this slide scale. The fee increases are mostly significant for the residential projects. Residential projects are the most time-intensive for staff. They include collaboration closely with parks, open space housing, as well as school districts and other entities that are typically reviewing all development projects like traffic engineering, utility providers, and public works. Residential projects also typically require some other advisory committees to have time to look at the projects or to be involved in the reviews, such as the Parks Recreation Senior Advisory Services and Open Space and Trails Advisory Committee. These add additional staff coordination time. There was also a focus in our table with recommendations to keep smaller projects and redevelopment opportunities focused with a smaller change. We provided some examples of how the changes that were included in the table would impact projects that have previously gone through the projects. Projects that have already have a PUD in place, planned unit development plan in place that would allow residential uses, would have a smaller impact than those, the largest impact would be those that seek a rezoning, establishing a PUD plan, or having to amend an established PUD plan to add residential uses, as well as adding the site development plan and final plot. Those are the most time-intensive for staff, and so, we felt that that was appropriate to also reflect that in the changed fee structure. Next slide, please. In terms of engineering fees, these were last updated much more recently than the planning fees. These were updated in 2020. These, similar to the planning fees, have been kept relatively low to be consistent with other jurisdictions. We did a comparison in 2020, and we were very middle of the road at that time in terms of comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions. Public-private improvement fees are the highest revenue source for the engineering division at about 80, 90%, 80 to 90% of the revenue, which makes sense since these are the most time-intensive. Potential updates for the engineering fees, we weren't looking for significant changes or recommending them at this time, since there was a very recent update in 2020, but we can continue to look for permits and fees that do not have fees associated with that, or permit types that do not have fees associated with them. We gave one example in the memorandum for weekend work requests, where additional time may be needed by our inspection teams on the weekend, but there isn't currently a fee associated with that request. Next slide, please. The memorandum provided an overview, as I mentioned, of some other fee types. We provided, it's hard to read at the scale, so I apologize, but it is also in the memo. This table that outlines some of the fees for the community and City Council to review, these all relate to different types associated with development. Some of these, these fee types, such as public land dedication, service expansion fee, and inclusionary housing, only apply to residential development. Other fees, like building permit use tax, planning and engineering application fees, like I just went over, and the water and sewer license fees are paid by all developments in Brimfield. We also reference potential modifications to development standards, since these also can have increased fees for developers, and we wanted to just make sure that we were keeping all of that discussion together. As was previously discussed with the water and sewer license fees, those are moving pretty quickly forward. I believe it was discussed September as the first reading. Inclusionary housing fees will also be brought forward to City Council for review within the next few months. Additional phases for instituting updates to the fees could come with the update pending direction from City Council for the engineering and planning fees. And then, the public land dedication fees will very largely be driven by the master plan update for the Open Space and Trails master plan. We need to, as previously mentioned in other study sessions, update the ordinance, as well as look at whether that public land dedication is still meeting the goals for Brimfield. And although we didn't fully analyze within this memo, the building permit fees, that can be, if directed by City Council, something we bring forward in the future, we believe that that would be most appropriate to bring back, paired with the code update that is scheduled for 2023. So, this, this table outlines the phases, as I mentioned, for the fees, and also identifies staff's anticipated level of impact that the fee could have on future development. And this concludes our presentation this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burton Zetti. Does any member of Council have any questions or comments? Councilmember Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Burton Zetti. That was a trenchant and to-the-point presentation, and it does show the complexity of the problem. You actually said something, I think, is, is the way we should go, which is recovery of the cost. It seems to me that if we set that as our goal, then it becomes more clear to you and the team to set those costs, those fees, and to the developers to know what they are. Number two, if we don't do that, we're actually using taxpayers' money to subsidize the work that has to be done to help the developers do what they want to do. And I think that the less we use taxpayers' funds to subsidize that work, the better. That's, should be part of our charge. Third, it makes all of the fee schedules clear and precise. This is what it's costing us to do this, this is what we will charge. Now, as you create greater efficiencies within the system, you could actually reduce those fees over time, so they could go up or down, but they would be based on fact, not based on just kind of gumption, or, you know, some kind of, we think it should be this. And we do a lot of it on that basis. In fact, we might even look at the TAP fees on the water side of it, is, you know, what does it really cost us, rather than what can we get from that particular fee, you know, opportunity? And I think it just reduces the whole complexity of everything that you showed us up here. If we know this is our goal, we're going to charge what it costs us, we're going to evaluate those costs on a regular schedule, and we'll adjust them from time to time. Then, the Council doesn't have to keep every few years coming back and saying, well, should we raise this another 5%? Should we, you know, that kind of thing. It just, I think it makes it easier for everybody. So, that would be my recommendation, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lindstedt?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think when we're talking about fees, what we need to be looking at is the wait lists and the time that the, that we have in our, in our current development process. You know, if a developer has to come and they have to spend 18 months in a process, that costs them a lot more than a fee would to make sure we have staff, to make sure things are moving at a more quick rate. So, that's kind of where my head is, is I'd like to see this fee structure competitive so that we can keep attracting good, you know, commercial and other developers, but also so that we can make our, our process expedient, because it, it costs a lot of money to hold on to a lot and go through a process, and then, you know, sometimes they don't, they don't make it. They get killed on, by Council or in some step of the process. So, that would be, that would be my, my goal with these fees, would be to make sure our process is expedient and efficient and staffed enough that we're able to be competitive with, with neighboring communities and to attract those, those developments, because the, the wait times can be, can be pretty long. So, I don't know if that's any direction that's useful for you, but if you're looking at those fees, I'd like to see it be, be reasonable, but, but keep our, our process fast, so.
Councilmember, if I could respond a little bit, because it also relates back to Councilmember Leslie. A little bit clearer direction would assist us, because the, if we were to go to 100% recovery, I, I, we included a table that's linked in, the cost difference is significant.
A lot, yeah.
It's a lot. Right. So, I think, I think it was Fort Collins that went through a three-year study of their process to determine how much they were really spending in staff time to process applications. So, it's a pretty extensive review to make sure that we're capturing all costs, and it could be something in the magnitude of going from $500 for a site development fee to $85,000 for that same type of review. So, it does capture the fee or the, the cost, but it is a significant difference. So, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, although that would help to fund the service that we are providing, which is also for the community, to make sure that everything is processed and allowed to have that engagement and meeting our requirements, but it wouldn't necessarily be a simplified approach, or be able to be easily adapted to for the developer.
I was not, I was not trying to say that we should have 100% recovery. I was, I was trying to say we should have fees that allow us to hire weekend inspectors and more planners to, to make our process, you know, instead of an 18-month process, it could be a, a six-month process. Or I don't, I don't know what the, the times are on each component, but they're long for some of them.
I appreciate the clarification.
And that was what I was trying to, whatever, what your proposal would be to get to more appropriate staffing levels for the, the pipeline of development, I think would be in our best interest and in the development community's best interest, so. But I don't know what percentage that would be, because I don't know the cost of that staffing, so.
Fair enough. Thank you. Councilmember Marsh Holsen.
Thank you, Mayor. So, if we went to 100% cost recovery, you mentioned the 85,000, for example, given the current market and the demand for developers to come to Brimfield, do you foresee developers not coming here because of that extra cost?
That's a great question, Councilmember Marsh Holsen. I don't think, my own personal crystal ball, right? This is my impression, and not asking developers, but just my impression is, the largest development teams can probably absorb such a cost. Where that might become problematic is for smaller projects, where the, the cost would be more difficult for them to possibly absorb, or to take the risk to even go through our process, since most projects in Brimfield do require a public hearing. They don't have a guarantee, as was previously mentioned, of their project being approved until they've been through a six-month to nine-month process.
Could we then do some sort of tiered system where the biggest developers pay the full recovery and the smaller ones don't? And/or, for example, affordable housing? If, if we give waivers for affordable housing nonprofits, that kind of, is that something that we could look at?
I think there's certainly some ways to structure fees to really look at our overall costs, if that was the direction of Council, and then to evaluate, kind of similar to how the utility rate study looks at our, our total costs, and then make some recommendations for how it could be structured moving forward for smaller projects, redevelopment efforts, inclusionary housing.
Because I think from my perspective, I, I want to see cost recovery, but I also want to be competitive and make sure that we're not keeping people out of the market. And frankly, the fact that we are so limited in our tax policy, you know, with labor and everything else, ability to raise taxes, to increase revenue for things that we absolutely need, should we then look at, recouping that cost through fees, where we can do it? And so, that's kind of where I'm at at the moment. I'm, that's all at the moment, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Thank you, Mayor. My first question's going to be in regards to the current cost recovery ratio under the new proposal. I was trying to find the document that kind of goes over some samples, and I couldn't find it, so that's probably just me being me. But what is that current cost recovery ratio under the proposed fees in this document?
Councilmember Ward, we, it's in the report that we think it's somewhere less than 5% of cost recovery, and that's just based on very brief discussions among our staff trying to do some rough calculations, very rough calculations. We think it's under 5%. It is probably not that much of a shift, based on the recommendations that we had in that table, really being like a first step towards something, because if we were to go to a full cost recovery, that will take an additional time, hopefully not three years, but we don't have a pandemic, hopefully, to, to be working around at that same time. It was just unfortunate timing for them, but probably is, is a more extensive timeframe that we'd look at.
Okay, thank you. And then, my next question is, continuing along with the, the fees, is how do these new fees stack us against our neighboring communities? I know there was attached in the document, communities like Aurora and Colorado Springs and Boulder and some other ones, with whether or not they assess fees for other, for components of the planning process. Where would this new setup fit us kind of within, would be middle of the road, more on the higher end, lower end, et cetera?
We felt that the, with the recommendations, and even as we are today, really, is very similar to our most, our closest neighboring jurisdictions, so it remains very competitive. But Boulder, Fort Collins, other cities are moving towards a full cost recovery model, and they're really an outlier. So, we had, not an outlier, they, they have their own group, right? That is a methodology that you can use, but they are very different than the, the groups that are charging the flat fees of 200 to $1,000 per application. What we did in the recommendation was try to focus on what is really the cost driver for some of our staff time, and residential is, is a huge component of that, because we're looking at parks and a lot of components that we're not looking at with a commercial development. And so, we tried to focus on a per-lot fee, which drove up those fees much more significantly, or a per-unit fee in some cases, to help reflect the fact that those are more, more staff-intensive in terms of time.
Okay, thank you. My next question's going to be in regards to impact fees. I'm not super familiar with them, so could you kind of go over like how you assess an impact fee? You know, something in here is mentioned about a rational nexus. What is really that definition of a rational nexus, and kind of some stuff like that?
So, Councilmember Ward, if City Council was interested in looking at impact fees as a whole, I think that deserves really its own memorandum, its own analysis, and that was one reason that we very briefly touched on it, but I didn't get into detail at all, because one, first, it can range pretty considerably. The one that comes to mind for me is, I believe it's the city of Boulder, and they have a fee that's associated with libraries, and they have a fee that's associated with fire. So, you're, you're paying impact fees related to the improvements that are necessary to serve your development, or what we believe would be the need generated from a particular development. So, in order to assess what impact fees should be, a very detailed study, probably an outside consultant, would be needed to look at the infrastructure in our capital plans, and then back into that with future development growth, what we believe that impact fee could be.
Okay, thank you. I believe the memo said Brimfield does technically have an impact fee, the service expansion fee. Are we still collecting on that service expansion fee, and what are we using that money for?
So, the service expansion fee is collected for residential development only. 50% of the service expansion fee, it's a dollar per square foot for residential. So, 50% of that goes to joint-use facilities with the school districts. We have, I believe, four or five districts, and most of those districts already have intergovernmental agreements that outline how those funds are to be used. And then, the other 50% go to infra- We have, I believe, four or five districts, and most of those districts already have intergovernmental agreements that outline how those funds are to be used. And then the other 50% go to infrastructure improvements within, it's supposed to be within a close vicinity or near future development.
Okay. And we're still collecting on that service expansion fee. Is there a sunset on that fee? I know mentioned in 2009, voters approved the continuation of that fee.
And there is no longer a sunset on that fee, but it is locked in at a dollar per square foot. There had been action previously, and I think I included reference to it with a prior ballot initiative to try and raise the fee, which failed.
Okay, thank you. That's my only questions for right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaaf?
Thank you, Mayor. So going back to Councilmember Lindstedt's points, you know, one of the biggest considerations of our developers is time. And so I think that as we're looking at the cost recovery, I think getting our approval time down is going to be, you know, something that I'm looking for. So if we can do that with raising fees, I think that's an important thing, but perhaps that's a different conversation, and getting our timeline decreased is got to be, you know, an important conversation for us to be having. Is there a cost recovery best practice? So I recall that with our REC Center, our cost recovery is about 60% in terms of what we're looking to do. I don't know if that's changed in the last couple of years, but is there kind of a best practice for what these cost recoveries should be for planning and engineering permit fees?
Councilmember Schaaf, that's a great question. I don't have a great answer for it, because it seems to be very, very split between jurisdictions that are locally, and again, this is just locally, looking at 100% cost recovery, and those that are staying with a very small percentage of cost recovery, but trying to remain competitive with each other in terms of what we're charging. So it's really two thoughts, right, two methodologies for approaching the fees. I don't know that there's a best practice regionally or nationally beyond that, but it's, we can continue to still look at that, and that's another option that city council could direct us to. As we look, if the direction is to consider what 100% recovery would look like fee-wise, then whether that's the full direction of council, or whether a certain percentage was ultimately what was decided upon.
Okay, yeah, and I don't know, I mean, it seems like that if we were to go 100% cost recovery, that there could be a potential of double taxation in terms of, you know, paying for certain things twice. And so I guess I would kind of be leery about going to that point, but I guess if there is some type of best practice, whether that's 50%, whether it's 75%, you know, where is that ballpark in terms of what would be recommended for cost recovery?
The member Schaaf, I think that's a great point that you bring up, and is one of the reasons that looking at what the full cost is, is really a more detailed process that would need time to look at, because you're correct, we need to make sure that we're not double charging for certain aspects of the work.
Where are we with concept reviews? I mean, have we started the conversation in terms of doing away with concept reviews? Where are we with that? Because that was one of those fees up there that I thought, well, that could be one that we could definitely remove if we didn't require concept reviews. But at the same point, if a developer wants to do a concept review, we should, you know, increase that fee a significant amount, because it does take quite a bit of time, and it is something that wouldn't be required. So I'm curious what our current conversation is with regard to requiring concept reviews.
Councilmember Schaaf, there isn't a particular direction that we're moving in at this time. We've gone back towards having the majority of the concept reviews done online, rather than in-person meetings, and I think we're trying to evaluate that as the feedback for those applicants, and then we'll evaluate and bring back to you all for future consideration, whether that's something that you want to continue to have staff provide to the community and to all of you and the advisory teams, or whether just in-person reviews, or whether there'd be some other type of direction regarding concepts.
Okay. It seemed, and thank you for that, I appreciate that, and I look forward to that conversation. I did kind of overlook the change of the online concept review, so that does add a little bit of a good conversation for us to have in terms of what, how that's changed the conversation and landscape. So one of the big increases was the planned unit developments. So if I'm reading this correctly, we used to charge for less than 10 acres, $250, and now we would be charging $5,000? I mean, that's a, am I reading that correctly, that it was that little, and that, you know, the proposed is going to be significantly higher?
That's correct. And I'd like a little bit, if I could have just a second to clarify, one of the things we've previously talked about is some of the other work plans that planning is working on to try and help the process and provide direction. One of them is providing a mixed-use district as a standalone district that can be utilized, and to work on our other districts to make sure that they are reflective of current trends and in development. If we can do that, our hope would be those small projects that are under 10 acres should not be utilizing, for the most part, custom-craft PUD plans that then create bureaucracy and administrative issues. So if there is a project that is 10 acres and is a PUD, it probably is highly complex in that case and requires a lot of time. But small projects that are a single building with a single user should not be utilizing that type of a process. And the fact that projects are utilizing that means that we need to address the code, and it has already been identified.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's the only one that kind of stands out for me, is that planned unit development. But as you said, that is highly intensive in terms of staff time, so it may make sense. But that one definitely jumped out at me. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lim?
Yes. Could you describe to me how your concern for the cost of small projects is shown in these numbers? I mean, what I see is, at least in residential, there's definitely a differentiation between smaller and larger projects, because there's a multiplier that's based on the size of the project, per lot or per unit. So is there something else that I'm missing that would make it difficult for a small project to be able to deal with these fees?
So, thank you for the question. The way that we were really approaching it was that a lot of our smallest projects and redevelopment efforts are happening in urban renewal areas. So trying to focus there, we did not propose a change to the urban renewal site plan fees, trying to keep that minimal, as well as the minor subdivision fees. So there's still obviously a lot of work that goes into those projects. They still, in the case of an urban renewal site plan, require public hearings, but trying to focus on the fact that typically urban renewal site projects are redevelopment efforts, or they're infill projects, and are in areas where we're seeking property owners to make investments.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. The affordability, you asked the question in general, did we wish to exempt affordable housing from these fees? And I would think the answer is yes. I guess my question is, which way would it make more sense to exempt them from the fees, or to completely, or tier it, or is there any consideration of the inclusionary housing fund should turn over the fees, should pay the fees for that affordable housing project? Does that question make sense?
It does make sense. I'm not sure I'm the one to answer it, though. It's a good question and something we might need to look into and direction of council. If the goal is to ensure funding remains for the community development department and all those involved, then you're correct, that would need to be funded out of some source. But I guess when I referenced it earlier, I was thinking back to a direction or a question that had come up at a previous meeting in terms of whether there are opportunities to reduce fees for nonprofits and affordable housing, and then we've had other affordable housing fees that are reduced for 100% projects, or for the units that are affordable or attainable within larger projects. So that was where I was going with it, but not ensuring the funding remains.
Where does a, is there any special fee for a use-by-special-review request? Is that built into here anywhere?
I might have it in the table. I don't think we were looking for a significant change to it, primarily because uses by special review either are usually accompanied by a site development plan if it's a new build, or they're going into an existing business, in which case the amount of time spent for the project is significantly less.
Okay. I'm thinking of a concept review right now where, in my ward, where there would be kind of a big overhaul with a use-by-special-review that, I don't know, I would think might require a fair amount of staff time, but maybe I'm mistaken on that. You said we would look at building permits later. Do energy-efficient upgrades by an existing homeowner require building permits, generally speaking?
They do, and the fee is based on the materials, the value of the improvements and work that's being completed. And we will be having discussions next year regarding energy code potential updates.
Okay, I guess that's where, just thinking then in the future, where we have our priorities kind of in conflict here. We want to encourage people to do energy-efficient updates, and, you know, with ACES, I know we've talked about those kind of programs extensively with existing housing stock, and we want to encourage that, but yet we are going to raise their building permit fee. That seems somewhat not consistent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmember comments or questions? We'll hold that thought. I'm going, just checking on first round, everybody good? I'm curious, though, because, you know, for the last two years, we worked on streamlining our development review process and bifurcating planning and zoning into the land use review and the neighborhood board. Have we seen time being, you know, carved off of those prior timelines?
So, Mayor, we have seen, especially with the smaller projects, that only are going to the land use review commission for a final review subject to call up. That has been a significant savings for those projects, probably around six to eight weeks of savings in terms of that time, and a single public hearing for them to work through. There was some additional time that is sometimes added at the front end to accommodate an additional neighborhood meeting, but a lot of projects are working that in with their concept review. So I don't think that that's adding time necessarily. I think it's an additional opportunity for input, but it's not adding time to the review for most projects.
And then giving decision-making authority to the land use review commission, that seems to have taken a lot off our plate, at least on the, you know, council side. So I feel like that was some good moves that we made. I do think it's interesting about the best practices in cost recovery. I mean, how do you know, right? But I do know that we still have a lot of undeveloped land, unlike some of these comparison areas. And I don't see these proposed phased-in fees as being too prohibitive personally. I didn't see anything, and we all know that, you know, there's no way that a PUD review is $200 worth of staff time. Maybe 20 years ago, because that's when these numbers were first figured out, but two decades later, I think that's another long overdue discussion as to what things actually cost. So I'm happy for this, and I do support your suggestions. So now we'll go to second round. Councilmember Marsh Holsen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question, minor question. My understanding is that fees don't require voter approval.
That's correct.
So the service expansion fee that was, why is that require voter approval to change?
Perhaps not appropriately named. It's not, it is not an administrative fee, it is an impact fee.
If I may?
Sorry.
The excise, it's called, if you look in our code and if you look at the ballot language, it was actually called an excise tax. So hence, it had to go to the ballot.
That makes sense.
We call it a fee now, but if you look at the language in our code and in the ballot language, it's a service impact fee, but it was labeled an excise.
So do future impact fees require voter approval, or those fees? If we do in the future?
Impact fees, and the fees that we've been discussing tonight, don't have, they are based on the actual cost to the community or cost of the service. So they do, they're fees, and they don't have to go, they're not taxes, so they don't have to go to the voters.
So the service expansion fee that's currently there, theoretically, could we just discontinue it and replace it with an actual impact fee? If we wanted to? I mean, I'm not sure if we, I mean, just out of curiosity on that.
You could discontinue it, and then as a separate matter, you could create an impact fee.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing any. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Burton Zetti and Ms. Allen, for bringing this to us today. And thanks, council, for the discussion on these very important topics. That concludes the agenda items for this evening's study session. There being no further business, the study session is adjourned. Good night, y'all.